Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to a beautiful day on the Outer Banks in the Dare County Board of Commissioners, September the 3rd, Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Couch for an invocation.
Good morning. Just take a moment to seek peace and unity. Gracious Savior, we thank you for the promise of fall. We thank you for the families that are represented here. We thank you for those who choose leadership. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed on the goodliest land under the cope of heaven. We ask that you be with us today as we make several tough decisions, as we hear reports from those who are committed to serve in the public, and those who serve our country. We ask that you grant us health. We ask that you grant us a servant's heart, and we are sure to give you the glory and the majesty and all authority. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. May we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County Manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and welcome back to Commissioner Overman. Good to have you back in your seat. Number one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. Y'all bear with me this morning. I've got a few items to go over, but most importantly, I am really, really thankful that our Vice Chairman is here with us this morning. The man upstairs really looked after this great human being and great personal friend of mine, and I'm so happy you're here. We have with us this morning the Executive Director of the Arts Council, Jessica Sands. Jessica, thank you for being here. We also have with us Richard Phillips, who's the Arts Council Chair. Richard, thank you for being with us this morning. And certainly, last but not least, we're always honored to have in our presence Senator Hanig with us this morning. Senator, thank you for being with us this morning. First item I have ribbon cutting. EMS Station 1, KDH Fire 14. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mike Kelly, who owned that property and gave us first refusal to purchase that property. Mike's not here, but Mike, I hope you're listening. Thank you for allowing us the first refusal to buy that property and build these two phenomenal stations. As most of you are aware, we're spending about $42 million to upgrade all of our EMS facilities throughout the county. Beautiful ribbon cutting that we had on 8/5/2024, and there's more to come. Mans Arbor is under construction. We made an offer to Nag's Head to purchase a piece of property that they own in Nag's Head to build an EMS station there. So, a lot more to come for our EMS, and this board's committed to making sure that our citizens get the services that they need to protect them in this county. Let me back up one minute. I mentioned three folks are here, and I apologize. We have Susan Bothwell and Mari Ellen Balance, who's Board of Education there here this morning, too. Thank you, ladies. Y'all are always very diligent to attend our meetings, and we appreciate it. Thank you. Buxton Civic Association meeting. Had the honor to go down there recently. Senator Hanig was there. Commissioner Bateman, myself, went down to hear an update from Superintendent Halleck for the Civic Association down there on Monday, the 12th. Very good meeting, had very good turnout, and a lot of good questions asked, a lot happening down there. As most of you are aware, we certainly continue to struggle with oceanfront structures. And just recently, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Coastal Management, and the National Park Service released a report managing threatening oceanfront structures. This comes a little over a week after another beachfront home collapsed in Rodanthee. The seventh such house collapsed on the Cape Hatteras in the past four years. DEQ Secretary Viser clearly said there's a clear need for additional productive tools and programs. This workforce group expanded their toolbox availability, and they put out a toolbox list of things that they will continue to work on. Some of the ideas that are being considered is leveraging, expanding North Carolina's efforts to acquire and relocate and remove the threatened structures. Federal and state land management agencies are looking for funding, considering authorizing new state programs with funding dedicated to addressing the oceanfront structures, consider authorizing a new state program with funding dedicated to addressing threatening structures. Beach communities consider establishing their own buyout program. House owners and prospective buyers may benefit from additional information on erosion before they purchase an oceanfront home. Flood or other insurance programs could implement proactive strategies to address threatening structures before they collapse. In the old days, back in, I can remember this, back in the 50s and 60s, you could actually approach the federal flood program, folks, and they would pay a portion of having your home moved back off the oceanfront. That happened back in the late 50s, early 60s in Nag's Head with some structures that were there. Clarify that Coastal Resources Commission rule language regarding required relocation of threatening structures. Consider additional requirements so that potential property owners are informed about their property and the history of the risk. And owners in state and local government agencies could benefit from clarifying guidance on when officials would have jurisdiction to require erosion threatened structures to be removed. So, these are lists of toolbox items that came out of that meeting that was held recently. You may have heard recently that canine distemper virus is currently fluid in Dare County. The Outer Banks SPCA has encouraged numerous, have seen numerous cases of this distemper virus among raccoons in Dare County in the past several months. This virus can be transmitted to your pets from wildlife if contact occurs, and they're recommended people keep pets on leashes and do not allow them to approach any wildlife species, especially if they're acting unusual. Keeping pets up to date with their vaccines is certainly the best way to prevent this. People who encounter this with an animal, they should contact the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. They have a helpline. That number is 866-318-2401. So, most importantly, check with your veterinarian to make sure your pet has all their vaccines up to date. Another really, really exciting event that's going to occur on September the 15th is Dare Challenge will celebrate opening a new women's center. The Dare Challenge has 20 years of successful experience in helping men with addiction, and they're pleased to announce the grand opening of a long-awaited women's center. Dare Challenge invites the public to celebrate this opening of the women's center, which is located at 448 Old Wolf Road in Wine Cheese on September the 15th. There'll be a floating meeting there from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. They'll have pig picking event, so stop by and enjoy some music and some barbecue and take a tour of this campus before the students arrive. The main facility on the farm has been recently renovated to accommodate six female students and two staff members. So, in addition, the women's center will provide GED classes for those who need to obtain their high school diploma. Successful program graduates can take free courses at the College of the Albemarle and Dare County Campus to also learn a trade. So, another exciting event, and I know you're looking forward to that, Commissioner Bateman, with a lot of hard work on your part to make this come to fruition. And then certainly, last but not least, I want to thank our board for stepping up to the plate. In recent months, we've had sod done at First Flight Middle School for our soccer fields. We've had that system sprinklered. It's lighted, beautiful, beautiful fields. I was out there the other day, got it all marked off and looking really, really good. I received this letter, and I'd like to share it with you. They asked me to mention this at public comment, so I'd like to make this a part of the record. This is from the Storm Outer Banks Soccer League. Outer Banks Storm Soccer Club would like to thank Chairman Bob Woodard and the entire Board of Commissioners, Bobby Alton, Spencer Gregory, and Avi Ingram for their instrumental support and quick action taken to upgrade the soccer facilities at First Flight Middle School. As you're aware, access to the field space is a huge issue for youth sports here on the beach, especially for our soccer community. We are ecstatic that First Flight Middle School now boasts two full-size line fields with lights and functional irrigation to keep the facility in pristine condition. We know how many times and energy, how much time and energy goes into the creation and upkeep of these fields, and the OBX Storm Soccer family is grateful for your acknowledgement of these issues and willingness to find solutions that allow our youth sports community to flourish here on the Outer Banks. These proactive measures will allow for the accommodation of the needs and demands of our Outer Banks youth sports, which grow every year as a result of ever-increasing participation of our local youth. With your continued assistance and support, we're confident that youth sports on the Outer Banks will become yet another marquee attraction within our beautiful community. For this, we remain grateful. I want to thank the Storm for that very nice letter they sent. And County Manager, with that, that completes my commission.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, and this is the presentation of the service pins. We have two this morning. First, we have Jamie Brown receiving her 15-year pin from Elizabeth Riley.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Today, we celebrate Jamie Brown. Jamie has been with Dare County for 15 years. She started in the Health Department as an accounting clerk for five years. Then she had a short stint in social services as an income maintenance caseworker, and in 2015, she moved over to General Services and served as a floater. And then in 2019, she moved to Human Resources as the Human Resources Assistant. Jamie also received Employee of the Month in 2016. Jamie is the smiling outgoing face that you all find greeting you when you come to HR. She is well-liked by so many Dare County employees from all over the county. She's extremely hardworking, and I can count on her to do whatever is asked of her. She's extremely dedicated and is a huge team player. Jamie loves to learn and is always willing. Jamie is Dare County's wellness program guru. She's the gatekeeper. She constantly monitors our time in attendance and finalizes it every two weeks. She processes all the employees' applications and deals with all job advertisements. She's the first person that all new hires meet to start their pre-employment process. Jamie keeps the HR department in check. She makes sure we are where we are supposed to be at all times, and I very much appreciate Jamie for this. She keeps us organized. There are not, there are no words to tell you how large of an asset Jamie is to Human Resources and to Dare County. She's wonderful, and I'm so happy that she's part of the HR team. When Jamie's not working in HR, you can find her as a manager at Daryl's Restaurant. She's also cheering on her Pittsburgh Steelers with her husband Max and her son Warren. She visits her Aunt Dee over at Peak Resources. She also can catch her reading on her picnic table every day, and she also is always loving on her two four-legged dogs. Just a side note, in your next life, you want to come back as Jamie's dogs. She is a good mama. Thank you, Jamie, for your 15 years, and I look forward to the next 15 years. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel McCallum to receive his 20-year pin from Jenny Collins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Dan McCallum, who is celebrating 20 years with the county here. He's originally from Ohio, and he used to come vacation here. Back in 2001 is when he started his public safety career as a firefighter, one and twos. And 2002, he got his EMT certification. At 2003, he upgraded that to paramedic, and he was working for East Cleveland, Ohio, full-time at that point. He came here, he's like, wow, this could be a nice place to work. And while he was on vacation, he put an application in. This was in 2004. Went back home and had to fly back a couple weeks later to come back for an interview, and he was hired. Because we didn't keep him busy enough, apparently, in 2005, he started also working for Kitty Hawk Fire Department, and he had put in seven years with Kitty Hawk Fire during a stint here with us. In 2011, he was assigned to Dare Med Flight. He assisted with several programs within the Med Flight as far as training, selection of a ventilator, standing orders for the ventilator use, and also the selection of personnel that were assigned to Dare Med Flight. In 2015, he restless again and was hired part-time by College of Albemarle, where he teaches class there. Started out with EMTB classes, and then progressed on to Advanced EMT and Paramedic Instructor. In 2016, he got his Level One Paramedic Instructor through the state. 2017, he was promoted to Lieutenant. He's currently on D-shift and staffs one of our Quick Response Vehicles and is one of our supervisors in the field. He is married. His wife also works for EMS. Together, they have a blended family, and they have 10 children. The youngest is five, and the oldest is 27, so that is keeping him very busy right now. And he made a comment to me last week that the youngest is now in kindergarten, so he's got some time on his hands. So, Dan, congratulations, and thank you very much for your 20 years of service with the county here. This is for you, and looking forward to many more.
Chairman, our Employee of the Month could not be here, so we'll move on to public comment. Before we go to public comment, those of you that received an award, please go right out this door to have a picture made. Wait just a second. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium when your time begins. There's a yellow light on the podium when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On our sign-up sheet, first I have Brian Harris.
Brian, good to see you again. Thank you.
Yeah, you too, guys. Good morning, everybody. We are Brian Harris, Buxton, North Carolina. Before I go into item five, which we're, a lot of people are here for, I wanted to give a couple updates with the Civic Association, just some other things we've got going on. We are working with the SELC for a grant. It's for $350,000. That could tie into the Old Lighthouse Culver project. We could use that to finally fix the Culver issue behind the red drum, and we could also potentially do the side streets down Old Lighthouse Road. So, it's, the SELC's working with us. That application opens October 1st. It seems like we meet every box. The grant would be for $350,000. You know, I think that'll help the county out a lot, you know, taking some stuff off your plate. I'd like to talk about item 22. We have the, let's see, the Beach Nurseman Permitting and Design Contract. We, obviously, the jetty subject keeps coming up. Bobby explained to me really well what room that needs to take place in and what that conversation needs to be, and I know that's not a county issue. But after talking with Baldhead Island, they were able to use the camera permits, and they used geotextile tubes, which were basically oversized sandbags, or 200 feet long instead of 20 to 15 feet long. You know, I think that would be a good way of stabilizing that shoreline right there where the three jetties are. Maybe we could look into that. And if it works, now Baldhead Island is going back and using, they're replacing some of those sandbags now, the geotextile tubes with hardened structures. And now, the reason why I'm here, I wish I had a whole lot of good news, but you know, as I left Buxton this morning, it stinks of oil. It's, this north wind's eating that beach up. It's going to be fully exposed by Wednesday. I hope you guys are able to get out there today or tomorrow and make your way down to Hatteras, because it looks like it did last September. Colonel Sturgens, Ms. Kysler, I know you guys just recently took over, and this is a lot on your plate. I know Carl Doctor resigned. You know, through the DEQ laser fee sites, I'm able to access a lot of old reports and old paperwork, and you know, there's some circling reports from the Coast Guard from 2006. That property's been extensively mapped. There's fuel lines right now that go underneath that road that I could walk anybody out there and show them where they are. You know, I know we're working towards this RAB board, but I just want you guys to know, I mean, we're your biggest friends in all of this. We cannot figure this out until we start communicating. And it's just, you know, here we are. We all warned it. You know, we all knew we were going to be at the end of the summer. It was going to get worse, and it's about to get a lot worse for Buxton. So, I hope everybody can get out there this morning, because it looks like it did a year ago. It's only going to get worse. So, that's all I got. Hopefully, we got some good remarks coming up with your report. I look forward to talking to you guys.
Brian, let me ask you, is anything we can do to assist, like writing a letter or whatever, to support your grant efforts for that?
They opened the application October 1st, and Lat Williams and Susan Sigmund, two members of the Civic Association, they're working all that out right now. That's, you know, it will be at some point. We're just not there yet. It'll be later than the end of the month. I do appreciate that.
Keep us posted.
I will. Thank you, guys.
Next on the list is John Leatherwood. Bobby, I've got some handouts for everybody. Can I bring any?
Welcome this morning, John.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning. My name is John Leatherwood. I've been a resident and Realtor in the Outer Banks here for 40 years, coming up in January. It makes me feel very old. I live in Southern Shores. I'm here this morning, however, on behalf of the Outer Banks Tennis Association, OBXTA. Our tennis community gives back to the Dare County community by supporting charities, programs, and events. For the youth and adults, we strive to advocate for the growth of tennis in our community. To do so, we are requesting support and some resources from our local government. Court usage includes local USTA sanctioned league team play, matches, lessons, try tennis, which is an introductory tennis for young people, and also adults, abilities tennis, clinics, lessons, and tournaments. Tennis provides a tremendous value in Dare County, but we need more courts. This is nationally. Since 2019, participation has grown to the highest level ever. Over 70% of all tennis is played on public courts versus private. 23.6 million Americans play tennis. That's a 33% growth in the last three years, 43% growth in youth players. Of course, you had that, read that, Chairman, you read that letter earlier from the Storm Soccer about how important youth is. Dare County, we have a focus on that in tennis as well. The Tennis Association, which, when I started playing tennis again about two years ago, I had no idea there was a Tennis Association. But we do have an Outer Banks Tennis Association. It's very active. It was formulated in 2007 to inspire tennis play, clinics, and leagues for all players of all levels. By 2019, in our Albemarle area, our adult league participant numbers in the Albemarle League were 372, now it's 631. That Albemarle League encompasses our Outer Banks Tennis Association. Achievements and outreach. Local tournaments, the purpose of that is to raise charitable donations, provide a healthy and social event for participants, and attract players to the community. We had an Outer Banks Charity Classic Tournament that started in 2003. The last one was in 2013. We want to revitalize that and bring that back. During that 10-year period, that tournament, through the Outer Banks tennis community, raised $185,000 for Dare Hospice. That's tremendous. Up to 181 businesses and local sponsors contributed to that. We now, of course, have an active Love to Remember Racket Sports Charity Event. This is for the benefit of the Dementia Friendly Coalition. This tournament is held annually at Duck Woods. It began in 20, excuse me, 2020. The last tournament we had, of course, was last year. We've got one coming up in November. Just in four years, that has raised $100,000 for the Dementia Friendly Coalition. This is near and dear to my heart, and I'm sure yours, too, that Outer Banks Tennis Association also is a great sponsor of the Dare County Special Olympics and Abilities Tennis of North Carolina. Currently, we have up to 30 athletes, middle school and high school, meet two times a month, September through May. We don't do it during the summer. No Special Olympics athlete or abilities tennis athlete is charged a fee for participating in events or classes. In 2022, we added two Dare County Special Olympic coaches. We also regularly have five to 10 Special Olympics and Abilities participants volunteers. I've been a volunteer of this, and it's been fantastic. Just an amazing experience. Y'all have heard of the Polar Plunge, I'm sure. I'm not for one for jumping in the ocean in March. I don't know about you, but that raised $50,000 this year for Special Olympics in Dare County. These are all programs that are sponsored and promoted by the Outer Banks Tennis Association. In two weeks, on September 14th and 15th at West Side, we have a Outer Banks Tennis Association fundraiser charity for the benefit of Crossroads OBX. I'm sure some of you have heard about Crossroads. It's a faith-based organization to help people with addictions. And of course, there was comments about that earlier and how important that is for our youth. That formulated, that thought to have that tournament formulated in June, we made it happen in July. We've got $20,000 in sponsorship money for this tournament, just in a very short time. This is going to be a fantastic event as well. We've done many other minor but important sponsors of local community efforts. I want to talk about our local facilities. We want to improve our local tennis facilities and add new ones to accommodate growing interest in population. We want maintenance of our current courts, and we understand the Kittle Hills are going to be refurbished soon, but what we'd like to do is have more courts. The Outer Banks Tennis Association is also asking that we, as a county, invest in our community by developing a plan and a budget for a tennis complex that would offer 12 courts. Utilizing other courts in the area would provide up to 30 courts. The Outer Banks Tennis Association in Dare County could then be considered for hosting a state championship, which could bring in revenue up to $500,000 to our community. Look how much demand there is. is for functions on a national and international level for tennis. This is our hope, our dream, and we'd love for you to partner with us in developing more courts for tennis with a nice tennis complex. That's it. Thank you.
John, thank you for sharing that with us. We will certainly take this under consideration.
Thank you, Chairman.
No other signups? Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Seeing no hands. Are there any public comment from Buxton?
Yes, we do have comment. Our first speaker is Mr. Gray Parsons.
Wengapo tuwena ma akmana tuwenele. Welcome relations, family, and people of good spirit. Wenele machapunga madamaskeet, wenele takohu. I am a descendant of the machapunga madamaskeet turtle clan. Kina nawe wado waneshi. Thank you for your ears, for listening to me this morning. Today, I represent the Sikatana Alliance. I'm sure most of you have never heard of that. It's a nonprofit that was founded a year and a half ago. I won't get into all the details at this point, but we did our first event last May at COA in Mantio. And we brought in five PhDs from different universities with expertise in indigenous history to the Outer Banks and the surrounding area to discuss the early contact between Chief Wendina, Amisapan, and the British that landed here in 1584. We also had indigenous people, leaders and diaspora from the Outer Banks, from Hyde County and from all over the area there to tell that story. It was a beautiful experience. I'm sorry to have missed it. And Danny, I really appreciate you being there that day. It lends some credibility to it. But I hope that you will be able to be with us next May, when we do our second annual event. Each year, we call this event "In the Spirit of Wengena," and there are always subtitles. Next year, it'll be "In the Spirit of Wengena 2: Our Women, Our Words, Our Water." So we talk about the environment, the traditional indigenous earth ethic, and we bring Wengena back to life. Wengena happened to be the first indigenous leader on the North American continent to stand up and lose his life protecting his people and his culture. He did the same thing any one of you or I would have done in his position. I believe strongly that we are missing a tremendous tourism magnet by not promoting this history stronger than we have. And that is the mission of this organization. In 2026, we hope to do an even larger event. And what we hope to do there is to bring in tribal leaders from across the nation to the point where the very first meaningful contact took place right here on Frisco Beach. Gage Town likes to take the credit, but the seed that planted what this country is was planted right here. And it was supported largely by indigenous people. The other organization I'm representing today is the Frisco Native American Museum. I've been a volunteer there for the last 25 years, and they told me to speak on their behalf. So there are three items I want to address. The first one is a very simple item that I'm hoping will be a slam dunk for the commission. Simply paint the word "Croatoan" on the water tower here. Okay? That would complete what we see as an indigenous trail, including the names of the original villages, Mania Wanchees, Kenneke, Chickama Kamiko, Hatteras. This would be the one that would complete that trail. And in 2026, when we do our big event, that title is gonna be "Our Restoration, Reconciliation, and Redemption." And that, we believe, can plant the seeds that can help restore civility and destroy some of the division that exists in our society today. Those are lofty goals, but I will be contacting all of you for your help. And I believe Commissioner Couch will initiate the water tower possibility with the word "Croatoan." Kina nawe wado waneshi. Thank you for your ears.
Thank you, Gary.
Next, we have Alan Dufala.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you?
Good, welcome this morning.
Just a little background, I've owned property on the Outer Banks since about 1998. I have become a full-time resident about nine years ago, okay? I do have a couple of concerns, and I say this to the Commissioners, I don't want to give anybody ulcers, right, but I would like you guys to give some other people ulcers. It's a thing we used to use in business, okay? And the concern there, seriously, is, one of the big issues on the Outer Banks with the National Park Service is the plovers and the turtles, to the lament of a lot of tourists and whatnot that come down here. We close the beaches, we do a lot of things. Now, I happen to live in Buxton, and we have an environmental liability brought on by the Navy at some point in time in the 60s, right? So my question is, is they should probably clean that up, okay? I don't know what it's gonna take. But the second side of that also is, are we doing environmental damage to the plovers and the turtles, okay? Just be very simple about it. The second thing that we need to do, or should be looked at, and I know this is difficult because it affects the revenue, but the issues with these houses that are, there's two issues. The houses that are falling into the ocean is one, and the second one, the ones that have encroached on, I believe it's the 100-foot line to the high tide line where the houses have to be back, okay? Now, we probably have, and before I finish, excuse me, let's go back to the, and I'm sorry to be a little disjointed, this caught me quickly, but if I walk out on the beach in Buxton, I can't go to the right because that's an environmental liability, but I can go to the left to swim. I mean, really? Think about that. And I know it's, it's not your responsibility, but my issue is here, is you pushing somebody else to say, hey, we didn't do this, you did it, you cleaned it up. The issue that we should be addressing here also is the rest of the underwater obstacles, because I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a question of when, somebody is gonna get hurt on those. And in this cleanup, part of that should be done also. It's a shame that we've taken beautiful beaches and allowed them to be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Wendy London.
Welcome, Miss London.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Dare County Commissioners, Army Corps of Engineers, and Colonel Sturgeon, for coming to this meeting today. You've asked for us to make our voices heard. We're here. We want to be heard. Now I ask that you come a little bit further. So as of this morning, the Buxton Beach Site has been completely uncovered. After overnight winds of 20 to 25 miles per hour, today's gonna get 30 plus. This is just gonna continue. The swell is five feet. This is nothing for us down here. This season that we're coming into is just gonna uncover all of this. If we wait, it's all gonna be released. We can't wait any longer. The smell of petroleum that I got this morning was sickening, hits you in the back of the throat, hits you in the back of the nose. I have a video that I would love to share with you all, but I would really, really love for you to come down here and see it firsthand. You've got 24 to 48 hours for it to continue to get worse. This that we're having is not significant. September 1st marks one year since the beach has been closed at the Buxton Beach Site, but it's been there far longer. This has gone on too long. We've been asking for things to be done and they're not being done. We need immediate action. We ask and respectfully demand that the structures and any of the pipes be removed immediately. Colonel Sturgeon, I really look forward to hearing what you have to say. In saying that, I'd really like to have the questions answered. What have you been doing? Can you please explain exactly what the holdup is? Can you point us in the direction of the most immediate source that can remediate this issue for us? I am a member of the Buxton Civic Association. I am a real estate agent down here. I have a house for sale on the Buxton Beach that we have a hangup with because of the environmental issue next door. And it's not fair to the owners of property down here to be held hostage to their houses, to be held hostage and not be able to sell because of an environmental disaster that's been there for a year. I really, really hope that y'all can put this effort to, to work and get this remediated for us soon. Tomorrow would be great. Thank you.
Next is Willie London.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Willie London. Oh, hi, sorry. I, I live down here in Buxton, just off Old Lighthouse Road. And, and I want to agree with, first of all, with Wendy, because I went down to the beach this morning. And yesterday, if you'd gone down to the beach in the morning, you'd have seen mostly summertime conditions. And within 24 hours, the beach has completely changed. And 24 hours from now, it'll change some more and so on. This is something that we've seen many, many times. And the erosion's not going away. So I'd like to talk about two or three things. Number one, I come from a background of working at NASA for over 20 some years, developing systems and doing engineering, doing systems engineering and so on. And one of the things that keeps occurring in this problem with the Buxton Beach is we are trying to piecemeal little pieces of things to try and fix problems that are systematic. We have a, we have a systematic problem with the beach erosion, not only in Hatteras, but on the east coast of the United States. And so some of the things that we're doing, such as doing monitoring and sampling and so on, are important, but they're only important in, in that they, in that they create a system that allows, that allows for the nourishment and stabilization of the beach, and on a, as permanent a basis as is humanly possible and as possible with the, with the budget that could be, could be available. So, one of the things that I've seen over the, over the years is that, and I think we're starting to enter this, enter this period with the beach erosion, is this is gonna be sort of obfuscation of the, of the real problem, which is the absolute stabilizing of the beach, building out the beach, possibly building jetties, putting sandbags like Brian talked about in, in the interim to stabilize the beach so that, so that we don't lose more, and we don't lose more houses. So I would strongly recommend that, that number one, immediate action, any immediate action that can be taken to the Buxton Beach be done to stop the erosion that, that has already occurred and is occurring. And number two, to, to create a longer-term project to, to stabilize the beach, probably including jetties and so on. This should not take a long time. This is not a 10-year study that has to be done. Based on my experience at NASA doing very large projects and things like that, that in, in the hole take a longer time. You, you could have an engineering study done in less than six months that would point you in the right direction to get this, to get this done in a systematic way and a more permanent way. And finally, I think I agree with Wendy that it's very important for, for y'all, as many, as many of y'all to come down over the next few days and just see what in a, in a few short days happens down here in Buxton. And with the, especially with northeast storms, but also even, even during the summer with southwest winds blowing and, and doing beach erosion. It, it happens constantly. It changes every single day. And you all should come and see and smell what's going on right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Willie.
Does anybody else like to speak?
Morning, everyone. My name's Jeff Dawson. How are you?
Welcome, Jeff.
Appreciate you. I just want to get up and reiterate pretty much everything that everybody else has said. I know a big problem seems to be, we just don't get enough public comment from Buxton. So here we are, all trying to group together and provide public comment. And it seems like we're all in agreeance. The Navy site needs cleaning up. We've seemed to have adopted a policy, a policy of bridges over beaches. I think we need beaches, not bridges. We keep retreating from the ocean. Our entire insurance front's gonna end up looking like the North End of Rhode Anthony. It's gonna be unswimmable and inhabitable. There's nowhere for turtles and birds to nest if there's no beach. We have a huge, huge problem that we desperately would love y'all's assistance on. That's why all these good folks are out here today. And once again, I don't really think I have anything new to say other than to just reinforce what the others have already said and to, you know, beg for your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anybody else? That concludes comment from Buxton.
Chairman, that takes us to item five on the agenda, and Colonel Sturgeon is here with the Army Corps to give us an update on the Buxton Beach Project.
Colonel, welcome this morning.
Good morning. First, I'd like to thank everybody here for allowing me the opportunity to come here and, and address to you on, you know, Buxton Fudd's, you know, property and for the outstations. I appreciate your participation as well. First and foremost, I did want to say that myself and the team will be heading down to Buxton directly after this meeting. So look forward to seeing you down there on the beach and, you know, talking a little bit further. I know you're primarily interested in, you know, the finding results for the overall soil samples that we, that we took when we removed the pipe. Those results are not finalized yet, but what I can do is, is tell you that some of the preliminary data from the soil sampling did detect petroleum above the state's screening levels in the areas where we took out the pipe. All right? So I wanted to be transparent even before it was released to come here and brief you on that. So what does that mean? You know, we're still receiving, you know, input and comments, you know, from our Environmental Unions Center of Expertise, also our agency stakeholders as well. So sharing that information with them is also important. Number two, we did some geophysical work, so ground penetrating radar for the, the area there at Buxton Beach. And the data that has come back so far is that there aren't any underground storage tanks that we are able to locate. Now, all this really confirms that, you know, comprehensive sampling of the project area is the next correct step. So we are not done there. And that's the main point that I wanted to say with those first two, you know, comments here before the board. So just a, a basic recap of, you know, the things that have occurred since May. I don't want to go all the way back to 1982 and 86. I know that you have a full agenda here. So what I'd really like to talk about is, is starting out in May, just not too long ago. As you know, we removed the pipe and sampled around the As you know, we removed the pipe and sampled around the surrounding areas. Those samples were sent to the overall lab. We removed a 70 to 80-foot, um, pipe. It was not connected to an overall storage tank. Um, and soil sam- sampling was subcontracted, subcontracted out at that time. Although the pipe that was thought to be the possible source when it was removed, our FUDS team has not been, uh, able to identify the source of petroleum significant enough to cause the volume of saturated organic material that has previously washed up on the overall shore, which further reinforces the need for more comprehensive testing. Also, in, in May, the Environmental Munitions Center of Expertise, that's our internal, just a, um, that center resides with Huntsville. They did an independent test of all the documents associated with the overall project over the years. They determined that all the processes and protocols were followed, but they did give us some recommendations. One, to conduct more, um, sampling in the project area to help fill in the blanks of the past investigations. And like I said upfront, we're going to go beyond further than that, that overall recommendation by sampling and performing a comprehens- comprehensive testing over the entire project area, not just certain areas. Additionally, that Tiger Team or Independent Review Team asked us to do some ground penetrating radar or geophysical work. So we have done that and that was accomplished in late June timeframe. That report is still currently underway and, and under internal review. The recommendations also resulted in the approval of funding to move forward to actually contract out that comprehensive testing. Currently, it looks like that overall pro- uh, contract award is going to be awarded in October timeframe. Again, I acknowledge that this is a lengthy process and each step in this process is required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Quality Management Regulations. During the entire process, we've sent out news releases, made social media posts with updates as details have become available. We'll continue to do this. We want you to know that we're diligently, uh, working towards determining what actions need to be taken to resolve this overall situation. I've met with, uh, agency representatives as well as some from the community who live and work here. And I understand, uh, the frustrations and, you know, the process that we're going through. But I will tell you that there is a way ahead. Uh, we do have comprehensive testing, um, that will go underway and will be contracted out in, in October. All right, so I gave you a little bit of the way ahead. I'm just going to talk a little bit more about some of the future actions. Excuse me. One of the things that I wanted to hit on is we're in the process of awarding a contract for a restoration advisory board. The first morning, the first meeting will be held in October, late October to early November. And during that timeframe, it, it'll initially be a first public meeting and we're going to provide an in-depth, um, analysis and requirements there to establish an overall RAB. A support contractor that will be, that will be contracted out will help the district team, uh, the district team to ascertain the level of interest, you know, from the community and what type of commitment i- is, is required for that establishment. It requires an overall long-term commitment on part of the board members who wish to be part of that RAB, including public participants. And we want to make sure that it's the right direction that the community wants to take. The RAB board members will represent the public and are provided access to environmental restoration, the environmental restoration process, giving the members of the opportunity to the review progress, participate in dialogue and provide comments and preventative advice to the district's decision makers concerning the overall cleanup. Public meetings provide access for all the community members, given the community as a whole, and the opportu- the opportunity to attend quarterly public meetings to discuss environmental restoration process. So it's either we can do one or the other, um, i- is bottom line what we're saying. And when we have that first public, uh, meeting, we'll lay out the overall process and timeline associated with it. Um, if it's not a RAB that the community desires, we would still be open, um, up for quarterly, um, you know, public meetings. All right, so our team i- is still reviewing, um, the performance work statement to award the overall comprehensive, uh, you know, sampling there. So determining the overall scope of work is going to be very important before we just go out and start digging holes. Just remember, it, it is going to be over the entire project areas, project area. So we're going to use a little bit more deliberateness, um, in, in our approach. We'll continue to meet with, uh, North Carolina Department of Equality to establish agreed-upon standards of comparisons for all datas now and into the future. And currently, we're still, um, working with our inter-agency partners, the National Park Service, Coast Guard and other stakeholder agencies for coordinations and to move forward. Getting back to the overall soil sampling, uh, report, um, from the pipe removal in May, um, it, it's in its final step, steps of review. Um, we, we will get that over to the National Park Service for, um, for comment. And then w- once they have viewed that, we will be releasing that to the public. And then for the geophysical report or the ground penetrating, uh, radar, it's going to go through the, the same, um, you know, process there. And we'll make sure that it's deliberate. There will be independent technical, uh, review team looking at that before it is released. All right. Just want to make sure I haven't missed anything for the board. All right, yeah, that, that covers it. You know, I wanted to talk about, one, the soil sampling and the initial, uh, results that we received back from the, the pipe, um, removal back in May. I wanted to talk about the, the geophysical, um, you know, aspect of the overall, um, project site. But I also wanted to talk about future RAB, um, opportunity, you know, for the community. And lastly, that we will be moving forward with a comprehensive testing for the entire project site. We remain, uh, committed to transparency in our, uh, communication and will continue to keep the community updated, you know, either through news releases, social media posts, agency stakeholder meetings, as well as any type of, uh, in-person meetings that we have the opportunity to attend. This is still my priority. I was, uh, sitting and, and talking to, uh, you know, the Commissioner earlier. And, you know, I said that there are 46 FUDS sites that, that we actually manage over six states. And Buxton is the one that has received my full and undivided attention. So that's a, a reinforcing, you know, fire there that, you know, this is a priority and it is for my team as well. So with that, uh, gentlemen, ladies, I can take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Colonel. I'll yield to the board, see if they have any questions. Commissioner Ross?
I do. Uh, Colonel, thank you so much for being here today. Uh, it means a great deal to us. I'm sure I speak for everyone that you're here addressing the, the assembled folks here in the, in the room, our board in person, as you have done. And, uh, I was at the meeting we held in the southern beaches back in May as well. So again, thank you for that. And very special thank you that you and the team will be going directly to Buxton after this meeting in person because what we heard from public comment was rather disturbing, I thought, with regard to the petroleum odor and so forth, that the winds have kicked up there. I did have a couple of questions. The soil samples, I have my, my notes that I took from May the 14th regarding the sampling. Uh, you said they are not final. Do we know how many more, can you estimate how many more weeks or months to determine the results of the soil samples taken four months ago?
From the pipe, sir?
Beg pardon?
From the pipe, sir?
Yes.
From the pipe.
The one, you said it indicated a higher level of...
Yes, sir.
I, I think you indicated petroleum compounds or organic compounds. And I was wondering if there is an estimate of when the official report will be published with the findings? Do we know? And I ask only because of the general frustration of, you know, have you ever watched the news lately? Uh, we can't comment, it's under investigation. Everybody goes nuts. And I'm just hoping we can give some definitive, yeah, it'll be by the end of September, by October, by Christmas, by, I don't know.
I, I agree with the sentiment. That's why I came up here and, you know, I wanted to give you some, some data even before the finalization, you know, of the report itself. Um, like I said, we, we need to give that to the, the National Park Service, you know, for their overall comment. It'll go through our, um, you know, quality assurance, you know, team at, at the district before it's, it's released.
That's it. It's the CX review and FPS review, sir.
And so what are we looking at? Are we looking at a date and group?
Colonel, we're going to have to hold the gentleman with a tie hostage until that report is released.
Believe me, he... I, I know I'm being recorded here, but, you know, I hold him hostage all the time up in my district headquarters.
And again, I'm not going to pin you down, but what it sounds like is months yet before we see a final report. True statement, okay. So everybody in Buxton, it will likely be more months before the first samples are taken. And you indicated a comprehensive set of samples will be taken.
Comprehensive, yes.
That would indicate if a similar timeline sometime late next spring to get those results back. I'm, I'm baking in six to eight months. Okay. Number two, it has been...
Hold on, Commissioner Ross. Why are you on that topic?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Am I, am I right in understanding that there's two agencies that have to make this review? Is that correct? Park Service and who else?
The DAQ, right? Environmental Expertise, Environmental Center of Expertise.
So two agencies. And I'm also, am I under the impression that the Park Service has already responded?
No, they don't have the report.
They have not yet.
They, they have not got the report.
They have not received the report yet, sir.
Okay. That, why? I mean, four months ago and, and, and they haven't seen the review as well as... I, I mean, this, this doesn't make sense. That's the frustration that our citizens are feeling is the fact that it's been four months and the folks that's supposed to review this haven't even got the report.
Sir, this report is generated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and they have the opportunity to respond and provide comment once it is complete. It is not complete and ready for their comment yet, sir.
That, that's, that's the part that is so frustrating with the federal government. And, and it's, it's, Colonel, this, I'm not pointing fingers at you. Th- this is unacceptable. It is totally unacceptable. And we, this country has got to do something to eliminate all of this red tape. And, 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 and is there not a sense of urgency from those who are employed with the federal government to, to act responsibly?
Sir, there's a huge level of responsibility and sense of urgency associated with this project, sir.
Well, we're having a hard time convincing our citizens of that. I'll be honest with you. I'm sorry to interrupt Commissioner Ross, but I had to interject that.
Yeah, that's why I indicated the metaphor of, you know, we can't comment because it's under investigation and then it goes on for an endless period of time. Again, if you've watched any issue on the national news, that, that's usually an official response from the agency. And it just leaves those of us involved feeling kind of empty, you know? And again, I'm not trying to be critical, Colonel. I'm just expressing the chairman's disappointment, frustration. Uh, it was reported with some level of astonishment back in May. And I, I'm hoping we can correct this if it's incorrect, that the Army Corps spent a half a million dollars to have a contractor remove a 70-foot piece of pipe. Uh, everyone in the real world said, "That's absurd. No one would pay a half a million dollars." And it's been repeated and repeated. I'm hoping that that was simply a misstatement. And I'm looking again at our representative here. Could you confirm or deny that, that it's a half a million dollars to remove a piece of pipe?
It was. It was, sir. Yes, sir.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I was told that the half a million dollars was the contract that was awarded.
So there's a lot of things...
That wasn't the actual cost.
Sir, there's a lot of things that go into that $500,000. One, all the, the workup, um, to get the contract ready to go is going to cost a, a portion of that for the Corps employees, right? To put the contract on, out on the street, to remove those pipes, to actually do the contracting, also to, um, to do the overall, uh, report and, you know, for that, that contract is all within that $500, you know, $1,000. It wasn't just $500,000 to you, sir, to remove a pipe and be on your way. There's a lot more that goes into that.
Right. Looking at county attorney because I know we do similar work when we sub, uh, put RFQs out and receive contracts and so forth. I just, I was disbelieving that we would spend a half a million dollars to just move that 70-foot piece of pipe. Uh, number three, we've talked a great deal about the soil samples in the area and the potential toxicity of the petroleum distillates that are remaining or not remaining and the source of said distillates and petroleum remnants. But we continue to skirt around. What about the big chunks of concrete debris rebar? The last explanation was FUDS jurisdiction does not include the removal of debris. And between the Navy, the DOD, the National Park Service, the Corps, the Coast Guard and the New Jersey Turnpike System, nobody stepped up to remove the concrete. And I'm just wondering if it remains in this ping pong ball. No one's going to touch the concrete until a whole gang of citizens in the county with large equipment just marches down there and starts removing it ourselves.
Sir, nothing has changed with the overall FUDS authority.
Right. So, okay.
And so the...
So it's going to stay there. Even if we find complete clarity or lack of contaminants, God, God willing, all of the debris and other concrete and so forth will remain there for posterity. Nobody is going to touch that.
Sir, is it contaminated?
No, it's just concrete. So it will stay until the Park Service or the county were to remove it, basically. And again, I'm not trying to be snarky. I, I honestly believe it will remain until either the Park Service funds the removal or the county funds the removal. I don't anticipate any change in the remit or jurisdiction of the FUDS authority for remediation and cleanup. I think that's a fair assessment. Would you agree? Would you agree, guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's no change to the FUDS authority, sir.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and predict that when you convene in early November the interest for a rehabilitation advisory board in the local community, it will come back with a resounding yes, please. Okay? I'm just gonna stick my neck out and, and Danny, you're the local guy, would you agree? Okay. I would even speculate we could probably accelerate this with the assumption that you've got a tremendous amount of community interest. Last thing, and Mr. Chairman, this is to your point. I was recently able to have lunch with United States Senator Ted Butt from North Carolina. And in the course of that discussion, we discussed a number of things on a national and frankly, international scale. And he said, "Is there anything that you guys have that is of a local interest that we might be able to help?" I said, "Senator, I have one thing. Please, who has enough," I'll just say, "juice" to say, "clean up the mess in Buxton? Don't build us new buildings, don't give us massive grants worth millions of dollars. Please clean up the mess that the Navy left there, that these citizens are living with day in and day out. Who can do this? Is it a bill in Congress? Is it a phone call to the Secretary of Defense? Is it a personal visit with the Vice President, the President, the Chief of Staff? I don't know. But I literally was begging him for anything he could do or his office that can break through this apparent..." And again, sir, I'm not attacking, I'm saying the frustration of the endless review months, study, we don't know, we'll form a committee, we'll test, it'll be another six to eight months. FUDS will not touch the non-contaminated remnants of structures and rebar. It just leaves us feeling very, very frustrated and disappointed. And so that was my last ditch effort to reach out to our senator in the hopes that he or the Senate could initiate enough action or pressure within the departments with budgets that make our county look like pocket change at best. The amounts of money, five hundred thousand for a, for a pipe, I mean, the kind of money. Anyway, I, I, I reached out to him and they promised that they would listen. County manager, I know you spoke to his, I think Chief of Staff on that and relayed the information.
We had lunch, Bobby and I had lunch with him.
Yeah, okay.
And we talked as well.
Yes, sir.
Had conversations with Senator Tillis' office in the same vein.
Senator Tillis, okay. I don't know who else. Let's go get the governor, the state legislature, the state senate, the National Guard, and I'm gonna call the New Jersey Turnpike System because they're gonna get involved in this too. It's just, I don't know where to go, sir. It just is so, so hard on us. Anyway, thanks. Yes.
Since you brought it up, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
The Coastal Resources Commission met last week and I was at the meeting and I briefed the Coastal Resources Advisory Council as well as the commission on this subject and sought their input, their efforts to try to help as well. At that meeting, the Deputy Secretary of DEQ, Bill Crane, was there and heard the briefing as well. And I saw him after the meeting. So we, you mentioned let the state authority, we're trying to get the state moving in the same way that we're trying to get the congressional delegation moving, to do things, to give them authorities, to give them money to do whatever's gotta be done to get something done there quickly. So we're working on that.
Okay. Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Couch?
Colonel, thanks for being here.
Can I get some, thank you. Couple of points of clarification. If I hear correctly, the pipe extrication did not reveal, it was attached to a UST?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Ground penetrating radar, what level of comprehensiveness are we gonna see? Because if I'm hearing initially that there's no underground storage tanks, you know, I can't fathom that a source would be the organic material alone. Yeah, that stuff can suck up a lot of benzene and byproducts and stuff, but I gotta hope that the GPR work that you all do will be comprehensive and will definitively answer whether or not there are underground storage tanks still down there. I remember the place as a kid and it was a, it was, they had their own community in there. It was very, I mean, it was self-contained. It was quite a, quite an operation down there. But I would love to, and I think the populace needs to know, the extent definitively if there are or are not USTs in the ground. Because they're gonna be immersed in saltwater. That's not a freshwater lens in that area there. It's, if those are steel tanks, which is what they were using, they didn't have fiberglass coated tanks back then, then they're, if there's anything left in there, then that's trouble.
Understood, sir. A lot of their information is still being mapped. Yes, we did go out late June, from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. Initial indications, you know, don't show that there are any left, but we're continuing to finalize and refine our data, just to make sure that there is none underneath there. But there is a lot of, you know, pipes, remnant infrastructure there.
When's this geophysical work gonna take place? Is that something that starts, you know, effective immediately or...
The geophysical testing has already taken place in June.
Okay, so the GPR work has been done?
It's, it's not complete yet, but a lot of the GPS, GPR work has been completed, yes.
Okay. What's the opportunity, what's the chance of getting documents relative to that? Have they been made public? Is there a report on what was revealed? Is that something that's...
It will be remade public once it goes through the overall processors of our independent review.
Okay. That's what I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. What's the circumference, circumference of what you're gonna be studying? What the landmass is, how much is it?
For the overall project area?
Overall project area.
Sir, I'm tracking that it is point three miles wide and it's going as, as deep as, back as the dune, even a little bit further, is that correct? Past the dune. I don't have the dimensions on it. Once we, let me see here. It kinda looks like a T, if you will. Point three miles across on the beachfront and the overall test area will go back about halfway past the pond. And you'll see the, the overall road, I believe that's Lighthouse Road that goes into the overall.
As I was asking, folks from the Civic Association said that there were some pipes underneath a road, I think you alluded to earlier. Maybe there might be a storage tank or something because the property was vast. Maybe they had tanks off the area. The other thing, I just would hope that when you do the advisory board that we had representation from the Park Service, everybody that has a say-so on that advisory board. And who, who appoints that advisory board?
We do. We do.
You do?
Yes.
Make sure we have great representation from everybody. That man there needs to be on it. Dave Howlett needs to be on it. Of course, you need to be on it. I would suggest you had somebody from the Board of Commissioners on there, community leaders. As the chairman said, this is a very, very important event for everybody down there. It affects their lives, it's been affecting their lives for a long, long time. And they feel, as well as this board feels, like that we're the stepchild and nothing's been done in the past. I like your attitude of saying, "Hey, you're number one on our list, we're looking at it." That makes me feel good that we're getting attention. But the long range that we're putting out there, eight months to ten months before we get any kind of answers on anything, before we even decide we're gonna do work on and where we're gonna do work at, that's kinda downlifting. But I appreciate your comments.
Understood, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner House?
Colonel, first off, I wanna thank you for your service and I wanna thank you for being here as well. I'm not only on the Board of Commissioners here, I'm also chairman of the Organized Task Force. And I deal with the Army Corps of Engineers pretty much on a daily basis for the dredging programs that we have for Miss Katie. The most frustrating part about all of it is the bureaucracy, is that one agent, one particular part or committee, like your environmental committee, has to review it and they have X number of days to review it. Then it gets sent to another agency. They've got X number of days to review it. Then it gets sent to another agency and they get X number of days to review it. Now, one of the things that's frustrating is, why can't all these agencies get the same paperwork and come to a consensus and that would cut out four or five months out of the process? And I'm sure with the weight of your office, you could probably get that done. Is there any way to cut the bureaucracy so it will cut the timeline to get these projects done?
Sir, what I believe you're asking about are, you know, our environmental, our regulatory department, is that correct?
That's one of the agencies, yes.
Okay. I know specifically within Savannah District, we've, we've actually been doing pretty well with our regulatory, you know, permitting bureaucracy and the level of checks is always gonna be there, sir. But a way to streamline that process to increase communication right up front so it doesn't take as long is something that we have been, you know, looking at. We do have, you know, partners that we work with directly to streamline some of those, those permits, so, yes.
So what, I'm using that as a reference.
Understood, sir.
What I'm saying is, can we streamline this process to get the Buxton site cleaned up? How can we go about getting that done? And like I said, I believe with the weight of your office, you can probably streamline that a whole lot quicker.
All right, sir. I'll look into it.
Thank you. That's good.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Danny.
Go ahead, Dee.
I just have, thank you for your service and for being here and giving us an explanation this morning. I wanna go back to that pipe that was removed, the seventy to eighty-foot pipe for the five hundred thousand dollars. Has that money been paid already out? I mean, because we don't have the results, final results, so.
Is it, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Sarah Kiesler. So the, the contractor has not been paid yet because we have not gotten a final report.
So it won't be paid until you get the final report?
That is correct.
And after listening to Danny and everybody else, other pipes that are there, is there a plan to remove those to see if there are any other tanks attached?
Initially, the geophysical work has not shown that there's any tanks there, but the comprehensive sampling that we plan on performing and awarding in October, if we see that there's other pipes that need to be removed, we'd also do that. But that would be future work down the road.
And so we're looking at many, many more months?
Yeah, we have to have a complete understanding of what the site looks like and where the contamination is so we can make, instead of just removing one pipe and then removing another, this will be a comprehensive sampling so we can understand the entire site.
Okay. And as you've heard from all the commissioners, it's a great area of concern. The timeline is a concern, working together is a concern. We've done everything we can do, talked to everybody we can talk to. Do you have suggestions of other ways, anybody else, anything else we can do to speed this process up? I mean...
First and foremost, I'd like to say that we are on a good trajectory to get this cleaned up. The time is, is the concern, it's a concern for us too. We want it to go as fast as we can with being deliberate as we can, working with our stakeholders. So like we, like I said to, to Mr. House, yes, we will look at, you know, ways that we can streamline, but at, at the end of the day, we still have to follow the process because we want this to be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Commissioner?
If you would, redouble your efforts. We're counting on you. You've got a, a very capable team, you've got very capable partners in the Coast Guard and also in the Park Service. The demolition, digging up concrete and getting stuff, we can get just about anybody on a tractor and go out there and pull that stuff out. But the stuff that is or is not in the ground, that's a huge concern. So with your capabilities, you kinda being the figurehead and being the face on this for the United States Army Corps, sir, just redouble your efforts, keep us opposed. We wanna work with you. We, we've got the capability here of making this a success story, but we have to push. Thank you.
Understood, sir. Thank you for your time.
Vice Chairman?
Colonel Sturges, thanks again for being here today. We really appreciate your, appreciate your time and the effort you made to get down or up here from Savannah. Thank you very much. And appreciate the time that you're gonna spend in Buxton. A lot has been mentioned about the five hundred thousand dollars to, for the, for the total budget to, to get that pipe, that eighty-foot pipe out of the ground. My question is, will there be a, a budget that is available for folks to look at to see the total? I understand, or I think I understood from what you said earlier, that that encompassed the whole, the whole project from studying that to see what was necessary to get it done, the whole nine yards.
Sampling, yes.
And all the way through getting it done, getting rid of it. But will there be a budget available for folks to see that, that shows that, that total budget for that project and what was encompassed in it?
I don't know. We're gonna have to go through all of it. We're gonna have to ask. I don't know the answer to that question.
Excuse me, but who do you have to ask? I mean, we've got, we've got a Colonel sitting here from the Corps side of it. I mean, you know, you don't get but one step beyond that, right?
Well, sir, this is true, but it's gonna have to go through Office of Counsel. I, I don't know the process of releasing that information off the top of my head.
So it's not public, public information?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying I don't know.
Can we take that down and get back with you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, board, anyone else?
Well, then, once again, Colonel, you reached out to me and asked to be here and that, I commend you for that, not doing this over the phone and your willingness to be here and be as transparent as you possibly can. And I can't thank you enough for doing that. I, once again, I appreciate your service to our country. I appreciate the job that you have and I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that of the forty-some FUDS sites that this is your top priority. I quite honestly do not envy you with your task. I know you're genuine, I know you're working extremely hard, but this bureaucracy is totally unacceptable in this country and God help you working through it. I mean, look what we experienced trying to replace the Bonner Bridge. You had an environmental assessment done for Tarr County, environmental assessment done with Fish and Wildlife, environmental assessment done with Parks and Service, environmental assessment done with DEQ. And the list goes on and on and on and on. And as Commissioner House said, this bureaucracy is totally unacceptable. And I, I'm just thankful I'm not in your position to have to work through it because it's, it's unacceptable to, for a year now, when this first started, that we are nowhere further than the fact that we haven't gotten the data yet, but we're nowhere further from the fact that we've removed a seventy to eighty-foot pipe. That's where we are, a year. I mean, I mean, folks, you know, God bless our residents on Harris Island. I mean, it's, this is, this is, you know, I don't know what, I understand the frustration, you know? I wish that there was something stronger that this board could do for... I wish that there was something stronger that this Board could do for our citizens of Harris. We've been, I mean, the very day you did the testing, the county manager, myself and Vice Chairman, we were in DC talking to our legislators, trying to, trying to get them to, to help us to get something done. We've had multiple conversations with them. Commissioner Ross has met with Bud. I mean, county manager and I just had lunch last week, a week before last, once again to continue. Senator, Representative Murphy's been down here. We've reached out to Senator Hanig, our representative in the House. They're doing everything they can from a, from a state point of view to try to push this. And I'm preaching to the choir. I'm not, I'm not preaching at you and giving you a hard time. But the, you, somehow you have got to express that same frustration that our Board has and our representatives have of why this is taking so long. It is, I cannot say it enough. It is totally unacceptable. And with that being said.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for going down this afternoon after this meeting and, and taking a look at the site. Hopefully that will, after looking at that and seeing what's happening, you can, you can talk to your higher-ups and say, guys, this is, this is critical. We need to move faster. So thank you again for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Commissioners.
Chairman, and you guys don't need to answer this. Maybe on your drive down to Buxton, you might amongst yourselves. If this identical situation with the fact case being identical and it occurred on a beach in Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, would the citizens be hearing the same answers? Would you all face the same burden of bureaucracy and delay? Or would someone say, enough, this needs to be fixed now, fix it? Again, no need to respond. I just honestly believe it would be a very different situation if this contamination and debris was on a beach in Rehoboth rather than Buxton, North Carolina.
Well, also, look at the bridge in Baltimore. Look how fast the Army Corps of Engineers worked on that.
Completely different?
Different, but same organization. I'm sorry, Colonel, but I'm beyond frustrated.
I have frustrations too. I'm just not communicating them to you or the public, so thank you.
I get it. But I think you can understand where we're all coming from. And again, thank you for coming and I do thank you for your services as well. Thank you.
Okay, folks, thank you, Colonel, and we shall move on. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item six is a public hearing. Each year we get grant dollars from the state NC DOT for our transportation program. And in order to accept those grant proceeds, we have to have a public hearing and we also have to have you adopt the resolution that's in your packet. So we will conduct that public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak to that issue here today? Anyone in Buxton like to speak to that issue? Hearing no one, we would close that public hearing and the resolution's in your packet for adoption.
Pleasure of the Board.
Sorry, move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Ross and it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. And those in favor of the, any further comments? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item seven is a public hearing for a zoning text amendment for section 22-27.14, the Harbor Road Marine Commercial. Noah, if you'd like to come up and give some background before we conduct that public hearing?
Good morning, Noah.
Morning.
Morning.
Ricky Scarborough Jr. has submitted a zoning text amendment asking for an increase in height for boat building facilities in the MC2 zoning district. The MC2 zoning district's located in Wan cheese as you head into the industrial park. It encompasses both the north and south side of the road. Currently, boat building facilities are allowed a height of 40 feet measured from NAVD 88, which is the North American Vertical Datum, and it's how we measure things in a geospatial world surveyors, engineers. He's requesting for a height of 52 feet measured from eight-foot NAVD 88. The increase in height would allow him, as the sport fish industry has grown, so is the size of the boats. And when the superstructure gets placed on top of the boats, they're no longer able to come inside a building at the 40-foot height. The increase in height would afford him that ability to bring a building in once the superstructure, the bridge and the tower and everything's installed on the boat. Currently, in Dare County, there's only one facility that can accommodate boats that have their superstructure installed. And that's located in the state industrial park, which is exempt from county zoning. And the applicant is here today to answer any questions as well.
We would then conduct the public hearings. Anyone here like to speak to that issue? Anyone in Buxton like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
Hearing none, then we close the public comment.
Reading over the notes, were there any, was there any opposition to this from any of the residents in the area with respects to the planning boards?
No, sir. When the planning board reviewed this two months ago, members of the Wan cheese preservation alliance actually came to the meeting and spoke in favor of the text amendment in support of Mr. Scarborough's request.
They spoke in favor of it?
In favor, yes, sir.
All right, then I'll ask the Board if they have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. Just an observation. I thought you all did a fine job on this. Was looking at the stuff, looking over the packet and the, just some of the fine print. You've, you've made these, made decisions. You kind of stand up and dance a little bit, so thank you. I think you and your staff did a great job and I appreciate Ricky's patience on this.
Okay. Pleasure of the Board.
I move that the draft amendment, section 22-27.14, MC2 zoning district be adopted as recommended by the planning board. A statement of consistency and reasonableness as prepared by staff is adopted as part of this motion.
Second. Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item eight is another public hearing. This is a zoning text amendment to section 22-31 group development. And once again, though, if you'd give some background on that issue.
A zoning text amendment has been submitted by Attorney Jay Willis on behalf of his client, Mr. Timothy Midget. The applicant is seeking to amend section 2231, which is our group development ordinance. They're seeking to amend that language to accommodate struck, or dwellings that were built prior to the date of the adoption of the Dare County zoning ordinance on November 20th, 1975. Currently, there's a number of structures throughout Dare County that aren't compliant or with current zoning regulations. And if you have one of those properties, you wouldn't be afforded the option of having a group development or constructing another principal use on your property due to the nature of the pre-existing structure there. The text amendment has been submitted by the applicant would recognize that and accommodate a number of properties throughout unincorporated Dare County and afford them the ability of having more than one principal use structure on the property.
Once again, Noah, I'll ask that same question. Any opposition at the planning board level? I don't see any.
No, sir. No written comments or verbal comments.
Then I will ask the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, if.
Need to ask if there's public comment first.
Oh, yeah, that's absolutely, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's correct. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anyone here like to speak to that issue this morning? Anyone from Buxton like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, the public hearing would be closed, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now we're back to this pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the draft amendments to section 22-31 group developments be adopted as recommended by the planning board. A statement of consistency and reasonableness as prepared by staff is adopted as part of my motion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Couch. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Bassman. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item nine is a special use permit number 3-2024 for Kenneth and Angela Daniels' group development. The parties to this have been sworn and with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Noah.
If you remember back early in the year, I was before you again for a tax amendment to the MHA zoning district that would allow the Daniels to reconstruct their furniture warehouse in Mann's Harbor. As part of that amendment that was approved, you know, it placed the redevelopment of this through multiple structures under section 2231, the group development language requires a special use permit. So that's what we have before us today is the special use permit application submitted by them. The proposal is to reconstruct the prior existing 30,000 square foot warehouse that was damaged by the fire through a series of three smaller warehouses. They're proposing them at 9,984 square feet. There's an associated site plan with the special use permit that lays out the improvements on the property. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed the site plan and has provided comments. Those comments are already included in the draft SGP. There's referencing there to an easement that has been in existence and recorded that allows for the continuation of use of a pond and dry hydrant that's located to the west of the property to accommodate firefighting in the event of another fire on the property. Mann's Harbor doesn't have county supplied water, so they have to rely on drafting locations and tanking water tankers in the event of a fire. So that's been taken into account in the special use permit.
County Manager?
Someone from the applicant, I need to ask a couple of questions. One of the, yeah, one of the clause, one of your clause. Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay, just three, three or four questions. One is, do you consent to the facts as they were just presented by Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
And two, do you consent to the admission of the file that we have in this matter to the Board as evidence in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, and do you consent to the terms of the proposed special use permit as presented?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Is there any other evidence to be presented? Hearing that, be all of my questions, Mr. Chairman.
And with, with respect to the special use permit, he's agreeing 100% to the conditions that were placed on it. Is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Pleasure of the Board?
I make a motion, motion to a for draft SGP and the site plan. I move the special use permit 3-2024 and the associated site plan for Kenneth and Angela Daniels' group development consistent of three furniture and appliance warehouses be approved.
Second. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. County Manager, we're going to take a five-minute break. Sir. Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. This is a special use permit number 5-2012 issued to J.T. Dixon at City Beverage for many storage group development. The parties have all been sworn and I'll turn it back over to you, Noah.
Thank you, Noah, once again.
Yeah, last one today, I promise.
You're on a roll.
Mr. J.T. Dixon at City Beverage has submitted an amendment to his existing special use permit that was originally issued back in 2012. Since then, there's been another, other revisions and amendments made to the special use permit as his property has grown and business has expanded. With this proposal, it's another expansion of the project. He's looking to construct five new structures and expand the property's services by having portable mini storage units, just much as we saw a couple of months ago, the, the business in Mann's Harbor expanding and doing the same. The development proposal and site plan has been reviewed by the Dare County Fire Marshal. His conditions have been added to the draft amendments to the special use permit. A copy has been provided to the Dare County Airport Authority and reviewed by their staff engineer. Conditions reflective of his comments have been added to the draft SGP as well. And the applicant and his project engineer here as well to answer any questions.
We deliberately answered questions now, right?
Yes, this is the evidentiary part, yes, sir.
I understand that the Airport Authority has to act on this and get approval from the Federal Aviation Authority, correct?
Yes, sir. They've submitted everything to the FAA.
Yeah, but they hadn't gotten that back yet. Is that correct? Is the applicant willing to plant the proper vegetation that does not grow in excess of the 30 feet to avoid height clearance with respect to what the Airport Authority requires?
In my conversations with the applicant, yes, sir.
Okay. I have some other questions, but I'll yield to the Board, see if they have anything right now. Does the Board have anything they'd asked clarification on?
Mr. Chairman, just with the Airport Authority there, if they weigh in and everything's kosher, it's a good plan.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would yield to the Vice Chair because he sits on that Board.
Does that language need to be made part of this?
It's already in the draft SGP. The conditions of vegetation not being over 30-foot in height or being maintained to not exceed 30 feet in height.
And the applicant also agrees to the 17 conditions, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have. Does anybody else have any concerns?
I didn't really have any concerns other than, I was a little bit, I admit I'm not all that informed on this specific details. Noah, is there anything that was of concern to you or the planning board that we may not have picked up from just reading through the background material?
No, sir, not on this. Like I said, this, the property's been functioning as such since 20, I think 2013 or 2012 was the first time he expanded operation existence. Prior to then, I've had no complaints from the property. Just part of this expansion has been from a property transaction with the Dare County Airport Authority, purchasing a piece from him and a reconfiguration of some property that the Airport Authority had that will accommodate this expansion.
Okay, yeah, mine was more of a, I don't know what I don't know. So what am I missing? But it sounds like we're pretty well covered with the facts as presented.
It's all in occupied storage.
Thank you, thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, sorry. My apologies. I didn't, I didn't see you sitting back here in the nosebleed section.
Any more questions for Noah?
No, I'm good.
Chairman, I'll ask my questions and then if you all have questions of the applicant as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
First, do you consent to the facts as they were presented by Mr. Gillum?
I do.
Okay, and second, do you consent to the. Okay, and second, do you consent to the, uh, presentation into evidence to the board of the file that we have in this matter?
I do.
And do you consent to the proposed SGP as presented?
I do.
That said, is there any other evidence to be presented? Mr. Chairman, if you have questions?
No, I, I, Noah's answered my questions, that they can agree, agreed to the conditions, uh, they agreed to my concern about the airport, uh, issue with the buffer and the thirty feet not to exceed. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with, with what I've asked. What, what about the rest of the board, any rest of the board have any concerns? Okay.
So am I under, under impression that FAA has not come back?
That's correct, hadn't come back to them yet.
So this would be a contingent on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's in the, that's in the notes.
That's in the notes, right.
Yeah, there's a condition that this extension couldn't take place until all state, uh, federal approvals, that the receipt got you.
Right.
We had to go through that same process already.
We got you.
Fun, isn't it?
Other government agents.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you, gentlemen, uh, pleasure of the board, oh, you have a question?
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
Um, I moved the amendments to SGP five dash twenty twelve and associate site plan for the City Beverage Ace Mini Storage Group Development be approved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chairman, item eleven on the agenda, um, Megan Beasley, our librarian is here to present a proclamation declaring September as library card signup month in Dare County.
Thank you for being so patient this morning and waiting.
Oh, absolutely, thank you for having me here today. Commissioners, Bobby, Dorothy, Dave, um, I want to thank you for having me. As today marks one year since my appointment as your Dare County Librarian, I wanted to share some numbers with you quickly before we read the proclamation, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners Basnight and Bateman have heard me often say the Dare County Library is experiencing a growth phase. And if you were to look across all library data points, you'll find an upward trend. To give you some idea of what I'm talking about, here are some statistics regarding use of our services and resources. These percentages are from the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and they are one-year averages over the prior fiscal year. Circulation of ebook and digital audiobooks is up fifteen percent, circulation of print and physical materials eighteen percent, home visit material checkouts fifty-one percent, log-ons onto our free Wi-Fi thirty-three percent, use of our public internet computers a hundred and fifty-six percent, attendance at adult programming a hundred and twenty-seven percent. Finally, but not least, new library card signups are up twenty-five percent. Dare County Library added almost two thousand new cardholders last fiscal year, and our patrons checked out over two hundred and eleven thousand items. These numbers show that Dare County residents use our library resources. Wouldn't it be great if even more of our community members take advantage of the materials, technology, and services that our amazing Dare County Library staff provides? Which is why I'm here today to ask you to sign this proclamation declaring September as library card signup month in Dare County. I shall read the proclamation now. Whereas libraries are essential for the education and development of children, offering everything from preschool storytimes to college and career planning resources for high school students, nurturing literacy and a love for reading. Whereas libraries provide welcoming and inclusive spaces where individuals from all backgrounds can learn and connect, bridging cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic divides and strengthening the social fabric of their communities. Whereas libraries are committed to creating and maintaining diverse programs and collections that reflect the communities they serve, ensuring equitable access for all. Whereas libraries assist people of all ages in navigating life's complexities, offering access to research, information, and government services that enhance productivity and fulfillment. Whereas libraries boost the local economy by providing critical access to technology and training for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. Whereas during times of crisis, libraries and their staff play a vital role in supporting communities both in person and virtually. Whereas the shared resources provided by libraries help households save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste, offering a simple way to make a positive impact. Whereas a library card ignites creativity and empowers individuals to explore new interests and pursue lifelong learning. Whereas libraries uphold democracy by promoting civic engagement and the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Now therefore, do I read this? All the way?
Yes.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners proclaim September as library card signup month in Dare County, North Carolina, and encourage everyone to sign up for a library card today.
Motion to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the proclamation, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion?
Just, uh, ma'am, uh, what, uh, are some of your efforts gonna involve to get the word out here, in addition to this, I'm just curious?
Oh, well, we've already put it in our newsletter, that went out last week. We've got advertising through our Facebook and social media efforts, we're going to, uh, community outreach through our various organizations through which we partner, um, outreach to our educators and...
Schools and stuff.
Well, yeah, everyone, anyone that we can touch. We have special bookmarks too that we're gonna be passing out to community members as well to encourage engagement.
Great.
You've got a good, uh, operation down there in Hatters, I'm in there a lot, I enjoy interacting with those people, they're very personable.
Hatters is, yeah, they've really done a really, uh, amazing growth, as my word is, my growth year down in Hatters this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Does a library card expire?
Technically, after two years it expires, but that's simply because we need you to confirm your contact information. So really, it doesn't quote unquote go out of use, we just need you to...
So if you have one, it's, it's a good idea to make sure that you have your updated information every couple of years?
Yes, yeah, and if, if you try and go and use it and it doesn't work, give us a call, so we can update that information and make sure you're in the system.
That's probably what's gonna happen in my case.
That, that card in nineteen fifty-four still...
I'm telling you.
We're happy to update anyone's card, just give us a call, give me a call, take care of it.
Chairman Woodard, just...
Yeah, that's a good question.
But, I have a question, can you tell us ways to sign up? Do we come to the library, online?
Oh, well, absolutely, thank you, Commissioner Basnight, yes, you can call us, you can come in. If you want a physical card with access to all of our online and in-person, uh, print materials and physical resources, you have to come in and fill out an application and present a form of ID or confirmation that you are a Dare County resident, taxpayer, or property owner. We do have those applications on our website, you can download them and bring them in pre-filled. If you just want access to our online resources, ebooks, audiobooks, uh, databases, legal documents, you can go through our website and sign up for an online card, and that doesn't require coming in at all. We can do that via email and take care of you that way as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Mine ran out, and I went in and it took me three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Megan, we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much, you'll have a great day.
We have a motion on the floor, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. I guess that card I got in nineteen fifty-six is kinda outdated.
I'll take care of it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, item twelve on the agenda, we have Lauren Wright here to present a proclamation declaring Roanoke Island is the first Purple Heart Island.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Happy to be here. Dare County, Roanoke Island, and Manio have all been able to declare themselves the first location on many significant points across history. Let it be first again, this time as the first Purple Heart Island. Along the Purple Heart Trail, established in nineteen ninety-two and starting at Mount Vernon, Virginia, there are many cities, counties, and towns, but there has yet to be a declared island across this path in remembrance of sacrifice. Roanoke Island has a large, highly decorated, active-duty and veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. The Purple Heart was the first American service award and decoration made available to the common soldier and is specially, specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Forces wounded or killed in combat with the declared enemy of the United States. Chartered by an act of Congress, the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart USA is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most important, make certain we never forget. Let Dare County show its great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces. All gave some, some gave all. Let Roanoke Island be declared the first Purple Heart Island. Thank you.
Lauren?
Yes, sir.
I have to ask, this is, this is great, it's awesome, how did this come to fruition?
Well, my husband is in the audience here today, and this is Dr. Kevin P. Wallace, um, Purple Heart recipient and former Vice Chairman of the Dare County Advisory Council, Dare County Advisory Council. Sorry, it's a tongue twister. I became very aware of the initiatives of the Purple Heart, and specifically the Military Order of the Purple Heart USA and its mission. So I went on the website and reviewed the directory of names of all of the Purple Heart recipients who have, um, become a member of this order. And there was nothing really from this area to show our support or remembrance of the sacrifice. So I reached out to the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and we are literally just one signature away from you guys today on being able to have signs made and to put up around Dare, um, Roanoke Island.
Well, that, that's awesome, and thank you for being so diligent and, and thinking about that, and most importantly, thank you for your service. And, uh, I mean, I'm honored to, uh, be a part of, of signing this, so...
Thank you.
Would you like to take a moment to read the proclamation?
I would like to, thank you.
Absolutely.
Whereas, the County of Dare has great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces, and whereas, Roanoke Island has a large, highly decorated, active-duty and veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And whereas, first created as the badge of military merit by George Washington in seventeen eighty-two, the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest military declaration presently in use. And whereas, the Purple Heart was the first American service award and decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Forces wounded or killed in combat with the declared enemy of the United States. And whereas, chartered by an act of Congress, the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart USA is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most important, make certain we never forget. And whereas, Roanoke Island appreciates the sacrifices that the Purple Heart recipients have made defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their immense courage and unselfish service to their nation. Now therefore, it is resolved by I, Robert Woodard, Chairman, Commissioner of Dare County, do hereby proclaim Roanoke Island the first Purple Heart Island, and encourage the citizens and residents of Roanoke Island to show their appreciation for the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to recognize their valor, and to show them the honor and support they have earned.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by, um, Vice Chairman and Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Is the second by Commissioner Basnight, any further discussion? I'd like to have some, a little bit further.
Okay.
We have a courtyard, uh, in Manio.
Yes, sir.
Where there's a veterans memorial there.
Yes, sir.
I would like this board to consider somehow having a plaque that proclaims Roanoke Island the first Purple Heart Island that perhaps we could put at that site.
Absolutely, I'd be all for that.
Is that something that you would, you would be agreeable to, and we'd have to reach out to the arts folks that's on there, I guess that's on y'all's property too?
They have a lease.
But at any rate, I'd like to see, this is nice to do a proclamation, but I want the public to see this regularly.
Absolutely.
So I would encourage my board that we find the funds to provide a plaque to put at the Veterans Memorial.
I would amend the, uh, the adoption of the, uh, proclamation to include that proposal.
Okay, would the other maker of the motion do the same?
Absolutely.
Would the seconds agree?
Absolutely, yes.
Good idea.
Thank you.
I got, yep, thank you, Bob.
Lauren, uh, you know, I know it's difficult for vets to talk about, there was, was for my dad, but, uh, there's some really good stories out there. If there are one or two, uh, Purple Hearts, uh, that are willing to sit down at that, at the monument there and just talk a little bit about, uh, I wish the man was still alive, his name was Cyril Gray, but, uh, he was on the USS, uh, I wanna say it was the Arizona, but anyway, he was knocked unconscious and they had him in a body bag. And, uh, he came to in the body bag, and it was, I mean, there's a humorous aspect to it, but, uh, he received a Purple Heart, and some of these stories out there, we're gonna lose these guys. You've got, uh, Mister Beasley over there, and, uh, is that, is it Beasley? Collette, yeah, I mean, that guy, you know, if you, have you read his book?
No, not yet, but I'll add it to my list.
No, it is really, really good, and, uh, he, he was, uh, talking about his experiences in Vietnam, about where they could not fire, I mean, he's literally got the Vietcong within spitting distance on him, somebody's gotta get that guy on tape, and he'll talk to you. Uh, you know, it's easy for somebody to give you something to do, but, uh, I would consider some oral histories.
Robbie Beasley is his name.
Robert Beasley, thank you.
Lauren, once again, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I'm, can't wait for us to vote on this, and, and my honor to sign this proclamation. So we have a motion on the floor, is that, uh, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Chairman, this brings us to item thirteen on the agenda, and we have Colleen Fagerston here to have a proclamation for Constellation Week two thousand twenty-four.
Good morning, ladies.
I'd like to, oh, don't know if I can talk. On behalf of the, the Daughters of the American Revolution, I would like to thank the county for again this year agreeing to declare, uh, September the seventeenth through September the twenty-second Constitution Week. In nineteen fifty-seven, President Eisenhower, at the urgency of the Daughters of the American Revolution, declared the seventeenth through the twenty-second of September as National Constitution Week. And so I'm so appreci- we're so appreciative that the county has again this year decided to declare Dare County as one of the Constitution, Constitution Week, uh, proclamation people, or counties, whatever. And I have to admit that Skylar has the proclamation.
That's no problem.
I don't have a copy of it.
We'll have the County Manager read it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy.
Sure, that's fine. This is a proclamation, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. This is a proclamation for Constitution Week, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four marks the two hundred thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, it is the privilege and the duty of American people to commemorate the two hundred thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas, Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens of Dare County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Witness whereof, I parent and set my hand and seal of the County of Dare to be a fixist third day of September two thousand twenty-four.
Move to adopt.
Okay, motion on the floor by Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner House, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have Sarah Sampson and Carla Heppert here to present us with a proclamation for diaper needs awareness week 2024 and Smart Start Month of 2024.
Good morning, ladies. Thank you for your patience waiting so long this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you all for having us here this morning. My name is Carla Heppert. I'm the Education and Program Evaluation Manager for Children and Youth Partnership. This is Sarah Sampson. She's the Executive Director for Children and Youth Partnership. First off, we just wanted to say thank you to you all once again for attending our State of the Child Conference that was held back in March. We are so grateful to have you there. State of the Child Conferences have really brought tremendous things to Dare County, and that includes Children and Youth Partnership. So in 1994, our organization was actually created following the second, the second State of the Child Conference. This year, we're excited to be celebrating 30 years as an organization. So that's 30 years of helping all children, youth, and families get programs and partnerships to ensure they have what they need to thrive. So we have a PowerPoint that I think will come up there. You can see it back here. But one of the things we're going to be doing for our 30 years is celebrating. So we're going to have our 30th birthday at Doughty Park. It's going to be on Saturday, September 21st, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and that's Doughty Park in Nag's Head. We're going to have live music, we're going to have yard games, we're going to have a scavenger hunt, and of course, cake, because a birthday party is not a birthday party without cake. But we invite you all to come out and join us on that day to help celebrate. We invite the community out as well. I think you guys have a hat back there that has an invitation attached to it. The hat has our slogan of helping families thrive, and then the invitation has all the details you might need to be able to join us that day.
So this year marks a big milestone for our organization. We're celebrating 30 years since we were created out of a 1994 State of the Child Conference, charged with focusing on issues that came out of that conference. Three years later, in 1997, we began administering the North Carolina Nationally Recognized Early Childhood Programs called Smart Start. And we are excited to share with you that the state of North Carolina has declared September as Smart Start Month, acknowledging the Smart Start Network's commitment for over 30 years to ensure that all North Carolina children enter school healthy and prepared for success. And as a partner of the Smart Start Network, we are committed to raising the quality of early childhood care and education, partnering with families to build on their strengths, and improving community health. So what is Smart Start? Smart Start is a network of 75 local nonprofit organizations serving 100 counties in our state of North Carolina, all committed to ensuring that every child birth through five has what they need to thrive. For 30 years, the Smart Start Network has been dedicated to ensuring that every child in our state has a strong foundation that they need for a successful future. And one of the unique strengths of the Smart Start Network is that it's locally county-based, and has a county-based structure which allows us to tailor programs that meet the needs of the families and children in Dare County. Today, we would like to just briefly share a little bit about some of the programs that we offer here to make a difference in the lives of the children and families in Dare So beginning with the benefits of early care and education. Research shows that children who receive high-quality early care and education are more likely to succeed in school and life. To truly thrive, children need to receive the support from, right from the start. We are dedicated to increasing access to high-quality early care and education opportunities. Our staff works closely with the local childcare programs here in Dare County to ensure that they have access to high-quality teachers, creative learning activities, and safe play environments. We offer referrals to parents that seek childcare, and we partner with Dare County Department of Social Services to provide financial assistance for families that can't afford childcare. As a follow-up to the State of the Child Conference, and as part of the Smart Start Network, we are focused on finding solutions to the state's childcare crisis. We aim to explore strategies and initiatives to address the workforce crisis, and implement family-friendly workplace policies, and to develop a childcare recruitment plan. Last year in, I'm sorry, we're going to stay on that for a second. In 2324, we supported the childcare workforce by providing education-based salary supplements, ensuring continuity of care for children by highly qualified teachers. Our staff also worked closely to provide professional development to childcare teachers. Last year, we served 45 teachers, and we provided technical assistance to eight local childcare centers and home, serving approximately 260 children. As the Smart Start Organization, we support families. We believe that strong families create strong communities. Recognizing that parents are the child's first teacher, we offer a variety of parenting programs and early literacy programs to support families in our community. Our goal is to partner with the families to create nurturing and safe environments for all. Last year, 148 parents participated in ongoing parent education programs to increase parenting knowledge of child development, enhance parent confidence, and promote positive parenting practices. The programs include the Triple P Positive Parenting Program, Parents as Teachers, and Baby Links. And we're excited to be relaunching the Explore to Learn Play Groups, inviting parents, caregivers, and their young children to attend weekly play groups beginning this month. And Children Youth Partnership, we also host several community events throughout the year, many of those you may be familiar with, such as Kids Fest, Block Play Extravaganza, and the Soundside Fun Fair. We invite families to come together, creating space for parent-child support and for parent-to-parent And then finally, Smart Start promotes health and resilient communities. Children Youth Partnership was one out of 10 communities that were awarded a North Carolina Healthy Resilient Communities Grant, which is a statewide initiative that aims to increase protective factors and positive childhood experiences for children, families, and communities. We've also received continued support from Out of Banks Health to offer training and consultations to Dare County School teachers around resiliency, and we believe that building a community of resilience is of the utmost importance in providing well-being for our children and families. And with that, Carla is going to share a little bit about diaper needs awareness.
So with diaper need awareness week quickly approaching, we wanted to spotlight CYP's Diaper Bank for you all. Imagine it being a Tuesday, you not having any extra cash, and you ran out of diapers for your child, and you don't get paid until Friday. We've actually had that happen at CYP's Diaper Bank. We've had a parent call and say, I am on my last diaper. Is there any way that I can pick up diapers from you all until Friday when I get my paycheck? We're really making a difference at CYP's Diaper Bank. So programs such as SNAP benefits, which were formerly food stamps, or WIC that are provided through DSS and the Health Department, are amazing programs that provide great supports for families, but they don't support the cost of diapers. So families are on their own when it comes to purchasing, purchasing such a costly necessity. And that's where CYP's Diaper Bank comes in. So on the second, Tuesday, and Wednesday of every month, we hold a contactless diaper pickup at our office in Manio. Families are able to come by and pick up two packs of diapers to support their diaper need. From July of 2023 to June of 2024, we held 12 diaper pickup events, and we also held two diaper drive-through events at the Fesden Center down in Buxton to try to spread the diapers out a little bit further. During just our diaper pickup events, we serve an average of 134 families monthly. That's up from 104 families when I spoke to you last year in 2223. At a high, we've been at 152 families visiting our diaper pickup for one month, and we distributed 3,600 packs of diapers in 2324. But, yes, sir.
I don't know the answer to this. It's not a trick question, because I haven't bought diapers in a very long time. If I were to go for, let's say I had a grandchild that was an infant, what would I pay for a pack of diapers of, I don't know, what do they come in, 12s, 24s? I don't really know.
So most packs of, the average amount in a pack of diapers, we averaged at about 25 diapers in a pack. And typically, depending on brand name, you can go to Walmart and buy a box of diapers for about $18 a box, and that's a, close to 100 diapers. Or you can, if you need Pampers, if your child has a sensitivity to some of those diapers, that can be as much as $25 or $30 a box for the same amount of diapers.
You said 25, then you said 100.
25 is a pack, so like a small pack of diapers, 100 would be in the box. So if, like four packs of diapers in a box.
So if I went to Harris Teeter and bought a pack of diapers that were Pampers, 25?
You're going to pay about, just for a pack, you're going to pay between $9 and $13 for a pack.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So none of our diaper bank stuff would be possible without the support of our local community. CYP's Diaper Bank is a community-funded program through the support of funds to purchase diapers and through the support of diapers that are donated. Last year, we were blown away by you all and your generosity and your support of CYP's Diaper Bank in the form of $10,000, and we wanted to share with you what that meant to our community. So that $10,000 equated to about 50,000 diapers that we were able to purchase and distribute out in our community. That's about 1,700 packs of diapers, serving 850 families in our community. What an impact you all made with your support, and we really cannot thank you enough for that.
So that's about half of what you distributed.
That is about half, yes. So as I mentioned before, diaper need awareness week is fast approaching, and as we spread the word about diaper need across the community, we appreciate your willingness to proclaim the week of September 23rd through the 29th as diaper need awareness week in Dare County, as well as the month of September as Smart Start Month in Dare County. And we welcome any questions you may have, and then hope that Bobby will read the proclamations for us. Going to give him his vocal workout today.
Before we get to the proclamation, the Vice Chairman has something he'd like to present.
Thank you all for everything that you have done, as we had a little sidebar talk over there earlier, but we really appreciate what you did. We were happy last year to provide you with the funding, the $10,000, and that came as, seeming as quite a surprise. This year, I want to propose to the board that we give at least that, and given the incredible increase in the cost of things, potentially up that to possibly 15,000, if that is agreeable with the board.
That's a motion I'll second.
I agree it is a motion.
I would second that, too. Yeah, and that's a motion by the Vice Chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House and Bateman and Couch and Ross.
All of us.
All the above.
Everybody.
All the usual suspects, Mr. Joe.
So, anyway, any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous, so.
Thanks for your good work.
Thank you all for the impact that you're making on Dare County families.
Absolutely. Commissioner Ross had to ask all them questions about number of diapers and stuff. He, they didn't have those when he was coming along.
They had cloth diapers.
That was back when you got that library card in '56.
Well, I did, that's right, it was a year after.
It was about the same time, that's right.
And then you had to have diapers on a washing machine.
That's right.
Yes.
All right, ladies, y'all have a proclamation, I believe.
Have two of them.
Have two.
Take a breath.
First is a proclamation for Smart Start Month of September 2024. Whereas the nationally recognized Smart Start Network has worked to ensure all young children enter school healthy and prepared for success throughout North Carolina for over 30 years. And whereas the first five years of life are critical, are a critical window of development, shaping a child's brain architecture and building the foundation for future cognitive, social, emotional behavior and health outcomes. And whereas the high-quality birth to five strategies and programs focusing on early education, health, and well-being, and family support create K through 12 and post-secondary education opportunities for students and a more skilled workforce for employers. And whereas the Smart Start, the Smart Start Network supports quality early care and education, preventive health services, family support for children from birth to five years old, and has a proven track record in improving early childhood education, promoting healthy births, preventing child abuse and neglect, and enhancing family support systems. And whereas the Smart Start Network serves all 100 counties and through 75 local partnerships, including the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, that incorporate community voices and needs in program design, and the delivery to ensure each community receives the support it deserves. Whereas Smart Start's local partnerships coordinate services, raise awareness, create collective impact across North Carolina for children and families, generating systematic changes to ensure the comprehensive well-being of our state's youngest citizens. And whereas the Smart Start Network is committed to promoting equity through ensuring all children, especially those with historically denied access, can benefit from the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas addressing adverse childhood experiences and fostering childhood resiliency are crucial for developing healthy, adaptive, and successful individuals, and Smart Start plays a key role in those efforts. And whereas, Smart Start Network recognizes and supports early childhood teachers and providers as the essential workforce behind the workforce and the important role they play in helping children and families thrive and enhancing North Carolina's economy. And whereas the Smart Start Network helps to provide critical infrastructure for the early childhood system through collaboration and partnerships with state and federal agencies and other nonprofits, bridging service gaps and providing needed administration to statewide programs. And whereas investing in high-quality early childhood initiatives like Smart Start can yield substantial long-term benefits for children, families, and society through increased educational attainment, higher incomes, reduced crime, and better health outcomes. We, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Smart Start Month in Dare County, and call upon all citizens to celebrate and acknowledge the essential role of Smart Start plays in building thriving communities across our state.
Is a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, it's been seconded by
Second.
by the Vice Chairman and Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, sign? Motion carries unanimous, ladies.
And then next is a proclamation for diaper awareness week of September 23rd through September 29th, 2024. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas the latest study from the National Diaper Bank Network reports that one in two families struggles with diaper need, an increase in previous studies done in 2010 and 2017. And whereas purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending worker school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the Dare County community recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for our families and community, and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Dare County is proud to be home to trusted community-based organizations, including the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. We, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through 29th, 2024 as diapers, diaper need awareness week in Dare County. We thank the Children and Youth Partnership, their staff, and donors for their service through the Children and Youth Partnership's Diaper Bank, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the Children and Youth Partnership's Diaper Bank to help ensure that all Dare County children and families have what they need to thrive. This is the third day of September 2024.
Move to adopt.
It's a motion on the floor to adopt by the Vice Chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, the Dare County Board of Commissioners, for the generous support of the Diaper Bank. That was a wonderful surprise, and it's going to really make a big impact on the children and families in our community, and it's thanks to you and your continued support of our organization that we can ensure that every child has an opportunity to thrive in Dare County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your good work.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution supporting official recognition of the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe as an American Indian tribe. I'll turn that back over to the Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, this is number fifteen. I have a resolution to present. If you recall, we had this brought to our attention, and we drafted a resolution to support the official recognition of the Roanoke Island Indian Tribe as an American Indian Tribe by the state of North Carolina. You want to read the resolution, if you will?
Can I do it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, you can.
Give Bobby a break?
Absolutely.
Spirit alarm and.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, you can, Dan.
All right, thank you for your attention. This is a resolution supporting official recognition of the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe as an American Indian Tribe by the state of North Carolina. And whereas the Roanoke and Hatters Indians were established tribes residing in what is now Dare County, North Carolina, at the time of European contact in fifteen eighty-four, and their significant role in the early history of Dare County is well documented. And whereas, got click happy here, hang on, I just lost it. Sorry, Bobby.
It's all right.
Should've left well enough alone.
Amity.
Whereas John Lawson, in his seventeen oh-one account, described the Hatters Indians as a distinct tribe living in a community of approximately ninety people on Cape Hatter's sandbanks east of Pamlico Sound, and noted their frequent presence on Roanoke Island. And whereas in seventeen fifty-nine, North Carolina Governor Arthur Dobbs and the Colonial General Assembly granted land to one William Elks and the Hatters Indians, acknowledging their established presence and settlement on the land. And whereas Reverend Alexander Stewart in seventeen sixty-one reported the presence of the Madam Mesquite, Hatters, and Roanoke Indians along the coast, and further documented that the Hatters and Roanoke Indians were living in areas consistent with their historical locations. And whereas Reverend Stewart's records from seventeen sixty-three include his efforts in baptizing twenty-one Indians and serving as superintendent for an Indian school, reflecting the continuous presence and organized community of the Roanoke and Hatters Indians. And whereas despite the sale of their tribal lands from seventeen sixty-one to eighteen twenty-three, the Roanoke and Hatters Indians remained on the Outer Banks, particularly on Hatters Island and Roanoke Island, and continued to maintain their presence through individual and family groups. And whereas historical documentation, including state and local records, court documents, and scholarly investigations by noted researchers such as Dr. Frank Speck in nineteen sixteen and William Gilbert of the Smithsonian in nineteen forty-eight, confirmed the continuous residence and cultural presence of the Roanoke and Hatters Indians in Dare County. And whereas in two thousand three, descendants of the Roanoke and Hatters Indians in Dare County reorganized, incorporated, and established a tribal council to represent their heritage and community. And whereas the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe of Dare County, North Carolina, has made and continues to make significant contributions to the cultural and economic growth of Dare County, with many descendants maintaining their ethnic heritage and familial ties. And whereas families with surnames such as Berry, Collins, Pugh, Scarborough, Golden, Dillet, Daniels, and Weskett, which are well-known throughout Dare County, are recognized as part of the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe, further demonstrating their sustained presence and identity. And whereas, according to the American Indian Center at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, North Carolina, is home to the largest population of American Indians east of the Mississippi River. And there are currently eight state-recognized tribes located in North Carolina that have met the criteria for state tribal recognition required by the state of North Carolina, and therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the historical and ongoing presence of the Roanoke Hatters Indians in Dare County, North Carolina, and their continuous inhabitation of the Outer Banks, including Roanoke Island and Hatters Island, as well as the surrounding mainland from the earliest European contact to the present day, and therefore be it further resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners supports the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe's endeavor to achieve official state recognition as an Indian Tribe, unquote, by the state of North Carolina, affirming the tribe's rightful place in the state's cultural and historical framework. And respectfully request that the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs take into consideration all of the above-mentioned information and documentation when reviewing the Roanoke Hatters Indian Tribe's application for state tribal recognition. This is the third day of September twenty-four under signature of Robert Woodard, Senior, Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve, please.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to item sixteen on the agenda. This is the Dare County Tourism Board request for consent expenditure from the Restrictive Fund Event Site Line, item number forty-five twenty-five. This is something that's come up before the board a number of times over the years. It came up a year or more ago, and we did not approve it at that time because at that time we were discussing the funding of an event site structure there, and, and those discussions didn't lead anywhere, and that sort of has now gone to a back burner. Our issue at the time was, we didn't want to be spending this amount of money to refund in Agshead while the tourism board at the same time was asking us for money to help supplement the cost of an event site, of the center there. And so, now that we're not being asked for those funds, another situation has arisen, and we need a site in Agshead for a EMS station. The town of Agshead needs a site for a fire station and other facilities. The old BB and T bank there in Agshead is owned by Agshead. It's not large enough for Agshead to do what it wants to do, but it is the right size for us to do what we would like to do with an EMS station. Further down on the agenda, you've got a contract for us to purchase that BB and T site. Agshead's already approved that. Now that the supplement to the tourism board's no longer an issue, they're asking, would we, or the tourism board's asking, would we now agree to refund that money? Agshead intends to use that refunded money, plus the money that we're gonna give them to close on that BB and T building, to purchase a larger site so that they can do their fire station and whatever else they want to do on that campus. So we've been able to work a deal, at least through the managers and I, that will work for both parties. This is the, sort of the next to the last step, the approval of the contract later in the general, would be the last step to make those things move forward. What this says is that you would authorize the tourism board to refund two point three three six one oh seven. It'll be six hundred thousand dollars this year, and then another hundred thousand dollars or more each year thereafter for ten years. And the tourism board can decide how much they want to give, but it can't be less than a hundred thousand dollars. And if they get to the end of the eleventh year and they haven't funded the whole amount, then they have a balloon payment, if you will, for whatever amounts due at that time. That's the arrangement they have reached with Agshead, if I've said that right. And so what they're asking us to do is approve that so that we can move forward with this process. And Lee is here to ask any questions, or to add or correct anything that I just said.
That would be the equivalent of Bobby reading my proclamation.
Okay.
That's some bureaucracy there, buddy.
Any questions of Lee of the board?
Yeah. Where did the hundred thousand dollar minimum per year come from, Lee? How was that arrived at?
It's a, it's a floor, a minimum payment per year.
I know what it is. Where did it come from?
Fairly arbitrary. It was just in recognition that, that the budget can change from year to year if we have storms or whatnot. So we wanted to set a floor that would give us the ability to adjust the budget down potentially, but I think it would be, I mean, obviously, we'd, we'd need to pay more than that, just on average, per year.
Yeah, 'cause if you didn't, then it would leave roughly.
Be a pretty big balloon at the end.
You'd have a big nut called, balloon, seven hundred thousand.
Yep.
What if you're faced with that? What's, can, can Agshead actually enjoin the tourism board to come up with the seven hundred thousand?
This, this is a, a purchase contract.
So, yes, they could.
Yes.
And if you didn't have the money for that balloon?
The, the money currently exists in that line item for the, for the full amount, but we, we thought it would be more pragmatic to spread that over time.
Obviously, my questions are probing, too. If you get to it, it's not there, or we the backstop?
No, sir, that isn't, the, the tourism board is a separate legal entity from Dare County.
Right.
And whatever agreements they've reached with Agshead.
Okay.
The enforceability is, are their contracts, and so it'd be between them.
Not our bad.
Got it, okay, thank you, Lee.
Sort of to that point, and to the intention behind the whole purchase, that, that's why six hundred thousand is, is the initial payment. It, it would be our intention to not get into that situation, and I don't expect it would be the case, where we would have that balloon at the end.
Okay, any other questions, Lee, from the board? All right, pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, it's been seconded by the vice chairman. Floor is open for further comments. Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Chairman, item seventeen on the agenda is, is the first step in the renewal of the Dare County Arts Council lease. The Arts Council has invested some significant money in the old courthouse site over there where they have, where they operate from, and we lease to them, and intend to invest more. They have come to us and asked us to extend the lease for another ten years. If we're inclined to do that, we have to adopt a resolution of that intent, publish it in the newspaper for thirty days, and then come back to you at a subsequent meeting to ask you to approve that. If, if Dustin can get it published between, in the appropriate time, we can bring it back at the next meeting. If not, then it would be on the November agenda for you all to look at the lease and approve it. So what you're being asked to do today is authorize us to adopt that resolution of intent so that we can get it published, and then you'd make the final decision when it comes back to you at that time.
Absolutely.
There's people here from the Arts Council, I don't know if they have anything to add, but that's, that's where we are in the process.
Richard, Jessica, do y'all have anything you'd like to add?
Here we go.
I don't have anything to add. I think that was great, and we're looking forward to continuing our work in the community, and thank you for your support through all of that.
Mr. Chairman, Jessica, I, I can't help but see, when I'm in that area, you have visitors coming in there, so even though this is the Dare County Arts Council's headquarters, so to speak, and does a great job in the community, I think you're getting some attention based on what I'm seeing from people on vacation, seeing our guys show off their stuff, and it's a good thing to see. I see those tour buses in front of the, in front of the place.
Yep.
Yep.
We do see them pull up.
Ready to make a motion?
I am, sir, okay. And that motion is? Getting mixed up with them here. Somebody make the motion, I can't find it.
I will. I'll authorize the publication of public notice and for the public, for, and place the item on the board's agenda for approval as soon as we can get it done.
All right, thank you, thank you. It's been motioned on the floor by Commissioner Bassnight, it's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, we've been beaten to death in negotiations again. We're down to a dollar a year.
I know.
Can't squeeze another dime out of them, so I guess we gotta live with it. All right.
All right, those in, those in, anyone else have anything? Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience this morning.
Thank you all.
Chairman, item eighteen on the agenda, you have before you an invitation list, if you will, that was sent to us by the Southern Albumoral Association, listing fifty people from Dare County to be invited to their upcoming annual meeting. This is your opportunity to add to or change that list. If you, if not, if you're satisfied with it, then you would approve that list and, and ask Skylar to submit it to the Southern Albumoral Association.
All right, has everyone had a chance to look at the list? If they have any suggestions, or additions, deletions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to approve.
Second.
As presented, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is, can we go back, go back to the tourism board thing? I want to be sure that when we made the motion, we made it correctly, because the motion is contingent upon closing on the Agshead property. If that wasn't included in the motion, we need to be sure that it was.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, that brings us to the next steps in that process, and the first is the Capitol Project Ordinance for the Dare County Agshead EMS Station, and Dave's here for that.
Let me just say, well, your source of the budget amendment is a debt issue next year. We're gonna have to see if the timing works to where we, if we can combine it with public works, and then what we're gonna pledge is collateral. We can either do public works, we've got a clean phase one on that one. We could do this property by itself, and what Bond Council wants to do is add it to the EMS pledge, which is the Killable Hills Station, if, if it's acceptable to the rating agency. So I'll let Bobby explain item number twenty. Just you've got to vote on the budget first before you can approve the contract.
So you're creating the ordinance that allows us to do the next item when I get to it.
Right. Move to approve.
Second. A motion on the floor by the vice chair, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Right, then, and item twenty, you have the contract that I referenced earlier with regard to the purchase of the old BB and T property. It's listed here as one oh five Seacrest Drive in Agshead. The contract is in your packet, it speaks for yourself, I think it's a one point seven million dollar purchase, that's the amount that Agshead paid for. It isn't really the true market value today, it's less than market. So it's a good deal for us, and it lets them recoup their money. When you approve this, then that starts a time clock going. We've got two hundred and ten days to make sure the site's suitable, to do all of our testing, to get the architects out there to be sure it's big enough, all the things we think we know already, but we'll verify that, and we can pull out of it anytime we want to in the next two hundred and ten days. And if we aren't ready to close in two hundred and ten days, then Agshead can pull out of it and move in a different direction. So that's the, the process, and so, you know, we'll start our due diligence once you all have approved it. Agshead has already approved it, so upon your approval, we'll have a deal.
Motion to approve the offer and purchase and contract.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, our, item twenty-one is the Capitol Project Ordinance for the two thousand twenty-six Buxton and Avon Beach nourishing and permitting and design contract. Much as we just did for the Agshead, this is setting the budget ordinance for the Buxton Beach Nursery project that you already said to move forward with, and so I need to set that ordinance, and then Dustin will come up here in just a second for you all to approve the contract to get our engineers working on that. I'll need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt the Capitol Project Ordinance.
Move to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, sorry. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair and Commissioner Couch. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous.
And then item twenty-two is the, again, the Buxton Avon Beach Nursery project, is the professional services agreement. This authorizes the engineers to begin their work to design that project to try to meet our timeframes. Dustin, is there anything we need to add to that?
No, sir, that's it.
Good morning, Dustin.
Good morning, Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board.
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve the agreement amendments and authorize county manager sign.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like aye. Motion carries unanimous. Dustin, while I have you, would you come up, please?
Yes, sir.
I've been going around looking at the improvements. I was out at the new youth center that we're building in, in Mania. center that we're building in, in Mania. Just, once again, Barn Hill just does fabulous job, and they're, they're on, on time and really doing a great job. Really looks nice out there.
Showpiece.
Yeah, absolutely. I was at Mann's Harbor, and looking at the EMS out there. Can you bring the, you fill me in, but I'd like for you to bring the board up to date what Barn Hill suggested to kind of speed up the project where they've already built the new walls for the, extending the heights. Would you, would you bring the board up to date on how that came about and how proactive they've been?
Absolutely. So in the original plan for, for EMS Station Eight, we had a multi-phased approach, where we were gonna build the new station in the back, then we were gonna do some selective demolition of the existing station. We were gonna create some bay space for the fire department to move their trucks in, and then we were going to extend the fire bay.
I'm sorry, Dustin, Station Eight is?
Mann's Harbor. Yep, Station Eight, Mann's Harbor. When, in working with Barn Hill and through the fire department and the community center there, and the existing EMS station, we figured out a, a phasing plan, a site layout that allowed all those moving pieces to kind of be accelerated. And so we are going to be able to, and as Chairman mentioned, we've already begun pouring the footers for the extension of the fire bay. The fire department there will be able to operate just as they normally would out of their existing station without any sort of interruption, and we won't have to worry about the cold weather going into the winter time where the, the water and the trucks could potentially freeze. That was the big reasoning behind the phased approach, and being able to move some pieces around, construction lead times being reduced somewhat, we were able to go ahead and move forward with the creation of the, of the new fire base.
Super. Thanks for doing that, Dustin, and thanks for working with Barn Hill on that, and thinking outside the box and speeding that process up. I really appreciate it. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead. Yes, sir.
What didn't mention, that's two months on the schedule and two months of general conditions, so we won't have to pay.
Wow, yeah, fantastic.
Dustin, on the youth center, the property behind, Annie Meekins Insurance, I've talked to him a couple of times, and he has some concerns, what kind of fence you're gonna put there to separate, and how tall is it gonna be?
I'll have to go back and look at the plans, but I believe what's normal and customary is a six-foot privacy fence, similar to what we did at Southern Shores to separate the existing property from the neighborhood behind it. I'll have to go back and look, but I believe that's what it is as well. It would be wooden, wooden base, wooden-built, six-foot privacy fence.
And I think that would suffice for what he's asking.
Sure, and if there's something that he would prefer, you know, we're always looking to be good neighbors and good stewards to those around us, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again, Dustin.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Yeah, while, while we have you here, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
You're a key man around this county. Is there any update regarding the RFQ to the firm that will be doing the parks and rec assessment evaluation of up and down the county? And it, what prompted me was the presentation and public comment from the gentleman from the Tennis Association. I was just curious.
Yes, sir. So we issued the RFQ, and in fact, we had done it earlier than the date that we originally discussed during that RAPCIP. Proposals were received, and we decided to move forward with McGill's. Their contract has completed the approval process. I've sent that back to Spencer Gregory Parks Director. He signed it, they've signed it, so we now have an executed document. There's a scope of works and tangibles, and he's spearheading that with those guys to get everything lined up and how we move forward. But everything is, is on track, and we're, we're moving forward.
Any time estimate when we'll actually have them in the field conducting interviews or talking to people and commencing the process?
Speculation only. I'd have to get the exact dates, but what I've heard and what I've read, it sounds like maybe another three to four weeks, and we can, we can start having them here, you know, scheduling some face-to-face meetings. I think they had agreed in their proposal to do two in Hatter Island and then two up here. But I, I would say in the next month or so, we should, we should have something with those guys.
We're ready on our side, I think, aren't we, Dare County? We're ready to have those conversations.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, we're just trying to get a timeline with those guys coordinated, when they can come and be on site, and what those meetings will look like, and then some of those, you know, specifics.
Thank you again, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
I have some comments with respects to John Leatherwood's comments about tennis, but I wanted, before I go there, I'd like for County Manager to bring us up to date where we may be with the site in Nagshead with respects to the pickleball.
Everything from our perspective has been approved, and from the Tourism Board perspective has been approved. The engineers are doing the site plan and working with Nagshead now to make that fit. There's a, a text amendment change that has to be done in connection with the site plan to make it fit on the site. They're working with the town to make all that stuff work together congruently, so that you're not waiting on the text change and then waiting again on the backend to do the thing, and doing it all sort of at the same time. I would guess, to get the site plan done, to get it before the town, to get all that done, we're looking at probably around the first of the year to get all that done, so that we could start on a project.
Great.
But that's, that's a guess on my part.
Great. And I, I wanted to catch John before he left, but I wasn't able to do it, but I'll reach out to him. Once, once we get that done, he has some concerns about the four courts in KDH. There's one, ooh, there's one court that's closest to Mustin Street that has pickleball lines on it, and with this, with these lines on that fourth court, it's not permissible by the USTA where they can have matches on that court. So I'm hoping that once we get this done in Nagshead, that we can go back and remove those lines on that fourth court to help the Tennis Association be able to use that fourth court.
Yeah, just two things about that. One is, we had two courts there marked that way at one point, and that prevented them from having tournaments there, and so we removed one of them, and I think that then met the minimum requirement. At the same time, we were able to accommodate the pickleball people to some degree. With this new court, and frankly, with this study that Commissioner Ross just asked about, that study hopefully will address what Mr. Leatherwood brought up, because our problem has been trying to make sure that we direct our resources to the places where there is a public need for facilities, not just where somebody asks and wants it. And I'm not saying that he's right or he's wrong, but I want to be sure that when we get ready to make these capital expenditures, whether it's for pickleball courts or for tennis courts or for soccer fields or for what else, that we're meeting, you know, the needs of our community and that we prioritize rather than just, you know, funding wherever we hear the loudest voice. So this will help us a bunch there, and it'll also help solve the problem that you just brought up about pickleball, because we'll have really some idea where that fits in the scheme of all, you know, recreation needs. And so this, this study will be a, a good tool for us.
Great. Thank you, Bobby.
Bob, we also, on, on the rec board, we made, I believe, what they said, the lines they're putting down there were removable.
Yeah, yeah. And, and when we did that, we knew that they would, they would be removed.
You just take them up, and then you have to have a.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to the consent agenda. And, and on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from July tenth and August fifth. We have the thirty-six month contract for NO before. We have the thirty-six month contract for Spectrum TV service at EMS Station Seven. We have a daily deposit exemption. We have the DEQ grant for Salvo, the DEQ grant for Hatteras. We have the Buxton Offshore Sand Search contract. We have a budget amendment for the Register of Deeds grant. We have a Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program contract. We have the Frisco Volunteer Fire Department Facility Assessment and New Station Design Professional Services contract. We have the Health and Human Services Health side, funding for the management of the chronic illness and pregnancy. We have the Health and Human Services Public Health Breaking Through Task Force Suicide Awareness and Prevention Grant.
Move to approve consent agenda, please.
All right, motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve the consent agenda as presented, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Next, you have your board appointments. First, you have the Albumoral Region Resource, Conservation and Development Council. The board needs to either appoint or reappoint one member to the council due to the updated bylaws. Currently, there are two individuals that serve on this council, Aaron Flickenstein, who was appointed by the Soil and Water Conservation District, and Maggie May, who was appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The Soil and Water Conservation District can no longer appoint to this council.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to appoint Ms. Flickenstein, please. Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
On the Health and Human Services Board, the board recommends that Vice Chairman Oberman and Janine Sewell be reappointed. The board also recommends Heather Jeanette and Dr. Jessica Stumppe appointed to fill the seats of Alex Hodges and Dr. Mark Grossman.
Motion to approve is stated.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Next, you have the Jeanette's Peer Advisory Council. The Board of Commissioners has the authority to appoint two members to this committee. Currently, Commissioner House occupies one of the seats with no term expiration, while the other remains vacant. There's currently one application on file from Susan Bothwell for this consideration.
Move to appoint Susan Bothwell.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve Susan Bothwell, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous. Commissioner House, thank you for bringing this to our attention recently, because that spot's been vacant for a while.
Yeah, it has been. And it, it's a good thing that we get a full representation on that board.
I appreciate you bringing that to us at our last meeting.
Next, we have the Organizing and Task Force that has one vacancy. The Task Force recommends that Anthony Lloyd be appointed to fill that vacancy.
Move to approve Anthony Lloyd to be appointed to the Organizing and Task Force.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, it's been seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Stumpy Point Community Center Board. Dady Shelton and Johnny Midget had resigned back in 2024. They both have reached out wishing to be reappointed. Currently, there are only two members serving on this board.
We have some concerns with this board. I'm not sure that we have on file applications for those wanting to be appointed. There's been some traffic, email traffic about the two that had resigned, and, and they said they didn't resign, so until we can get to the bottom of it, I would recommend that we table this until we find some answers with respects to those board.
I agree.
I would agree.
I agree as well, although I do have confidence in the two that were initially appointed.
Okay, well, that, I mean, I don't know that we need a motion to do that, do we, county managers, or table it?
If you table it, you have to table it to a time certain. If you don't take any action, then you can let it sit till you're ready to take action.
I mean, I want to, I want to move on this as quick as possible, but.
How about take no action and ask Skylar to put it back on a few, tell us which agenda, and we'll put it back on the future agenda. You want to bring it back in December?
At least within sixty days.
November, put on the November agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that have to be in a formal motion?
Uh, that does not.
Okay.
Next, we have the upcoming board and committee appointments. In October, you have the Library Board with three terms expiring. In November, you have the Rodanthe Wave Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring. And in December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring, and the Tourism Board with six terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, County Manager. It brings us to item twenty-five, Commissioners' Business and County Manager's Attorney Business. Once we go through this, we'll, item twenty-six will be a closed session, but I'll ask the County Manager what he has in addition to present to us this morning.
Sure.
Or this afternoon, I should say, now.
First, is, at a previous meeting, we talked about the Recovery Court Coordinator and, and the other two positions we have in our Recovery Court. And we talked about a contract that we had with the state that basically said we had to cover disability costs as well as any workers' comp costs, and yet they're gonna be state employees. I've been back and forth with the state several times. They did send me an email with regard to the disability, and there's only a one-year risk. In my conversations, it appears that we can't really do anything with the workers' comp, and so we have to then assess the risk. What is our risk, and are we willing to take it if we're gonna move forward with this? And thinking back and looking back, when we first began this program, we were willing to employ the coordinator as our employee. In fact, we were gonna do it as our employee initially, which meant we would have had the workers' comp disability liability anyway. It worked out where it worked out for supervision purposes, better to put it in the administrative offices of the court, so that it could work through the court system more directly. And in doing that, the state had to take them as their employees, but their employees that we funded, so that worked out good for us. So as I think about this, if we were initially willing to take the risks on the workers' comp, and we were initially willing to take the risk on the, the disability, then what we're about, if we move forward with this contract, what we would do now really doesn't change that risk. It's the same risk that we would have taken otherwise. We're self-insured, right, Dave, on the workers' comp now?
Partially.
So, yeah, so we would be out of pocket for that, whether they worked for us or not. So, so I guess my point is, the risk is there, but it's not different than the risk we would have taken had we made them employees. We don't have the ability to negotiate it away, and so if we're gonna move forward and have this program, and we're gonna have these employees, we have to be willing to accept that risk. And so it's before you to authorize me to move forward with that contract, if you're prepared, understanding that we have the disability risk and the workers' comp risk, and that's the same risk we have with all of our other employees.
What is that self-insured retention amount, Dave?
I was looking to try to find that. I know it's not per employee, it's.
I was getting ready to ask, is it, is it per employee, or is it total?
It's total, and I don't have it in the footnotes, but.
So the basic, if, if, if we exceeded the total in any given year, then we wouldn't be covered for this person, if you will.
Gotcha.
So we're based on where we were.
Yeah, when you, I'd like to, I'd just sort of, since I'm former insurance, I'd like to know what that self-insured retention is, just out of curiosity. But if, when you find it, have time to find it.
So the bottom line, Bobby, we're still where we would have probably been if we'd employed them.
The only difference in where we would have been if we'd employed them and where we are now is, is that if we have enough workers' comp claims that uses up and gets us into our coverage that's above what we self-insure, then our employees would be covered by that insurance policy. Whereas if we get to that same place, and we have so many workers' comp claims that we exhaust our funds, and we're into that insurance policy, then this particular, these two particular employees would not be covered by that policy because they're not ours.
Permanently deducted is what they are.
So, so we would have some risk, but that would require us to exhaust our whole fund before that kicked in.
Dave, does the county have an experience mind?
Yes, they're for the premium.
Is it, is it, is it negative? Is it below one?
It's below one.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know. Okay, that's good.
That's inside-baseball insurance talk. The rest of us don't know what that means.
Well, it's, as long as it's below one, it's, it's excellent.
We don't have high risks. We don't have a lot of workers' comp claim comparative to our payroll.
So do you want a motion, or do you want, you just want consensus?
I'd need a motion to authorize me to enter and renew those employment contracts.
I made that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chair. Floor is open for further comments. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
The next I had on my list was the Nagshead Field. I don't know if you want to do that on your agenda.
Yeah, let me, yeah, we can do that now, but let me, let me give the board some history there, if you don't mind, before you present that, Bobby. I've been working with the Storm Group and the Soccer Moms. I've been working with the Storm Group and the soccer mums throughout the county. And at y'all's approval and gratefully appreciated, and you heard the letter that we received, we were able to re-side those fields behind the first flight and, and get the water system out there well. And those fields are actually, they've been cut about three times and they're in excellent shape. They've, they've marked them and they're ready for play and they're tickled to death. Well, I met with them out at our site in Nags Head. And to save those fields inside the fence, there's four fields there. And Spencer's rotating those goals there, so it's not a whole lot of play in front of those goals when they're rotated. They, they brought it to my attention, could we do something outside the fence? And there were some issues potentially with stormwater, but Bobby's resolved that with talking to our engineers. So he's going to bring to your attention the cost at a proposal I'd like to see us approve to side that field outside of the fence so they can use that for a practice field, even a game if they have to, to continue to, to not put as much usage on those other four fields. As you recall, sometimes we have to shut those fields down because it's too much play and we got to let the Bermuda germinate. And so this will help us tremendously and Bobby has the numbers to do that. And I've asked him to present those numbers to you for your consideration.
So in the original site plan where we built those fields out there, there was tennis courts proposed where we're about to do this that never got built for whatever, and that's been, what, twenty-some years ago? So it's been a long time ago. So we know that, we, we know that according to engineers, that that area, we're not worried about stormwater runoff and all that. Plus we're doing grass. We're doing grass and we're doing a sprinkler system to keep the grass, but there's no lights involved in this. So it would be usable on the weekends and usable after daylight savings time and usable for some number of hours after school, you know, when time permits and lighting permits out there. The field would be big enough, probably maybe for one regulation size or maybe one soccer field slightly smaller than regulation size. I'm not sure yet what the measurements come out to. But nonetheless, what it's used now for is the smaller kids and they don't need a hundred and twenty-yard, you know, soccer field. They can use smaller fields and it'll keep them off of the bigger fields and make the bigger fields available. So it's a good use for us. The pricing for this is, ranges from about seventy-three thousand dollars to about ninety thousand dollars. Depending on what we can do and what we contract out, we've got to contract out the irrigation. That's the, the biggest part. We may be able to get the sod installed ourselves if we can. That'll save us some money. And we may be able to buy the sod directly from the sod manufacturer and that'll save us some money as well. So I guess what I'm asking if we're going to move forward is not to exceed ninety and then we'll do it as, as, you know, cheap as we can do it, save as much money as we can, doing things that we may be able to do ourself, which would reduce that cost.
I'm proud of you.
And that would come out of the contingency, right Dave? Yeah, so that would authorize me to use the contingency for that.
All right, thank you Bobby. Do I have a motion?
Yep.
I'm so moved.
It's a motion by Commissioner Couch and.
Bassnight.
Bassnight, and it's seconded by Commissioner Bateman and the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you gentlemen. I think that will certainly help our soccer kids tremendously.
Next, just to bring you up to date, the Rodanthe Harbor dredging is supposed to start this week. I think maybe today. As you know, we went around and around and around with the Corps and the state trying to get them to open that harbor up for our emergency ferries and we got nowhere. And you're talking about frustration with the federal government. They've got a system in place where it's almost impossible for them to do it. They have to have a need before they can allocate the money. You don't have the need till you have a storm. By then it's too late to allocate the money. They got a ninety-day timeframe to, to issue a contract. Well, ninety days before, you don't know if you have a need. So they can't issue, it's just on and on and on. So they're never going to do it. And the state has a, has a dredge but didn't have a permit and their dredge was in the shop. So we said, we can't let this sit. We've got to do something. And we went out and got our permits as quickly as we could. I'll give Division Coastal Management credit. They jumped on it. They recognized the need to do it in a hurry and we got the permits in lightning speed to do that. And they did everything they could do to help us. We got a contractor in place. He was ready to go as soon as the permits were issued and he's mobilizing and we'll get that done now. It'll take him about seven days or so to do that. So we should have that taken care of before we have a storm. And so we'll have our emergency channels available if we should have a storm.
My ignorance is showing. The Miss Katie is not applicable for this task.
Too shallow there.
Too shallow.
Now, in the fu-
The channel's too, too narrow.
But in the future, once we get it open, it may be, I had talked with Jordan a little bit, that they may be able to do something in the future, especially if we have to do the whole channel from, or parts of the whole channel from there back to Stumpy Point, but we'll see. But this is, this is a very, it's a bucket and barge project. They're, they're going to scoop it up with a crane, put it in a bucket, dump it on the land and then dump it in our spool site. So it's a very small project.
Once that channel's opened up, Miss Katie would be able to go in there and maintain it if we could get those permits.
Right.
But with the, the draft of, right now, the current draft of that channel is about four to five feet, which is what Miss Katie drags.
I got you.
Yeah, it's closer to.
I threw eyeballs on it today with the northeast wind. It's driven all the water across the sound, so.
You can dig it out with a shovel right now.
The other thing is we talked, we talked earlier, spent a lot of time on the FUDS site and I mentioned who we'd met with and all that. But I also wanted to add to that, that just to be sure and to be safe, we had our water tested that we use down there. And it came out fine. Anything, there was no detectable levels of anything. Everything was per standard and we didn't have any potable water issues down there. And that includes testing for the forever chemicals and all that stuff. So our water is, is fine down there. We talked before about testing the, the two ponds and we've got those tests back as well. So from that perspective, we haven't had impacts yet there and so that's, that's good news. And then you want me to speak to pickleball? Or did we already cover that?
We already covered it.
Okay, so, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Bobby. Our Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
I was just looking at the notes that I made. I, following up on Commissioner Couch's comments about the Purple Heart and the stories from, from those folks, I think that'll make a, I'm going to talk to Current TV about sitting down with some of those recipients, maybe even in times for, in time for Veterans Day, because I, I do, I think that's a really nice idea.
Yeah.
And we'll have a Dare County table, outreach table on Thursday, late afternoon, evening for First Flight Middle School this week. So we're looking forward to that. It's always fun to go to the schools and talk to the parents and talk about hurricanes and more, you know, more beach, all, all of the county initiatives. So it's a great opportunity. That's all I have.
Would you, would you work with Dustin on my recommendation for a plaque?
Absolutely, yes.
That we could put at the Veterans Memorial for.
Definitely.
Down there, so.
Yeah, for there, because I, I'll actually go down and take some pictures and see what's there. It's been a while since I looked.
Okay.
And I plan to reach out to her about, because it sounds like she's done a lot of research and has.
Yeah.
Good, you know, notes as to how to find these Purple Heart recipients.
Right.
Be fun to find them throughout the county.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yes, I will add that to my list.
Thank you Dorothy. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you got anything else for us?
Just I'm looking at stuff. I'm not sure about the answer I gave you, so I'll get you an answer.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine. You know.
I might be wrong.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think that self-insured retention's outrageous. I'm sure it's not an outrageous number, so that's not.
It is not. We, we, we're in our third year. We've done pretty well so far.
That's great. It's good to hear that that mod is below one. So that's excellent. Thank you. Well, that brings us to Commissioners Business. And Ms. Bassnight, would you kick that off for us?
Yes, sir, I certainly will. First, first of all, I'd like to say I'm really happy to have Commissioner Overman back with us, looking really good. Only I would like to say I'm really proud of what this Board of Commissioners has done with all the, the advances on the EMS station. I thought the ribbon cutting, like you said, Chairman Woodard, was, was a fantastic experience and an occasion. And the building is beautiful and I thank all those people who had a part in it and thank all the EMS workers. Also like, would like to say that I, like you Chairman Woodard, have talked to the soccer parents and have looked at that site in Nags Head and it's an excellent select, an excellent suggestion to go forth and put sod on that practice field, which is just outside of those four fields. So I'm glad that we have approved that. Very appreciative of that. Last month I mentioned that the Dare County ABC Board was looking to fund monitors to go in our schools for alcohol education. The, the last Dare County Board of Education meeting, that, that board approved the acceptance of the money that the ABC Board will give. They have to approve anything that's over a five thousand dollar expenditure. And at the last Dare County ABC Board meeting, that expenditure was approved for ten monitors to go into ten schools. I, I met with Superintendent Bassnight and with Amber Griffith, who was with Dare Casa, to craft the message that we'll put on those monitors. Mr. Bassnight will be at our next ABC Board meeting in September to accept the check to fund those ten monitors. And we're looking forward to getting the message out. At the last Board of Education meeting, the student advisors said, well, gosh, maybe we can all, something came up about the vaping in schools and the tobacco use. And they said, perhaps we could put a message about that on there as well. So we're looking to try to do a really good job of sending a message to our students in all of our schools about alcohol education and substance abuse. And let's see. I think that's about it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Has a new bill?
On schedule. Everything's on schedule in Buxton, yes.
Do they have an anticipated opening date?
Not yet. No date set yet. But we go down, well, someone goes every, the Monday before our meeting, which is the third Monday of the month, to do an inspection, have a, a meeting with the architect and the staff.
Thank you, Bee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Okay, thank you. Just go down a quick laundry list of some items that are going on. On September the tenth, in the afternoon at Jeanette's Pier, there is a meeting to launch and continue to propel forward the Ignite Blue Zones effort. That is being sponsored by our own Health and Human Services Department and the OBX Hospital. And as some of you may be aware or recall, there are nine Power Nine, they refer to them as, initiatives that would represent very strong, healthy lifestyles that have been attributed and tied to not just longevity, but healthful longevity, where you're able to continue with a very full, robust life into your nineties and beyond. So I will be participating with that on the tenth, the morning of the eleventh, lest we never, ever forget. We will have a walk commemorating those that died on nine eleven, two thousand and one, beginning at eight thirty. EMS Station One. The walk itself begins at eight forty-six at the first attack. Continuing, we have day at the docks in Hatteras, Danny, nine fourteen, September fourteenth.
Be here before you know it.
Yeah, big day, day at the docks. I'm looking forward to it. And finally, we heard John Leatherberry.
Leatherwood.
Leatherwood, John Leatherwood, sorry, refer to a number of the Tennis Association initiatives, one of which I had the pleasure of speaking at and participating in last year, which is October twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six at Duckwoods Country Club. It's called Love to Remember. It is a dementia-focused tournament and fundraiser for the OBX Dementia Coalition, Dementia Friendly Coalition. And I, I just want to call it out as a very, very worthwhile event for this terrible disease that plagues so many of us and in our families and our community. So that again is at Duckwoods, the Tennis Association. It's a very, very big deal and a good deal. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Ross, thank you for bringing up the nine eleven memorial walk. I will definitely be there. Nine eleven is a very special and dear day in, in my heart. And I will continue that tradition and I for one, will never forget that day. The North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission recently held their quarterly meeting. Most of what they put out was just a review of the fisheries manage, management plans and some things going forward with it. One of the things that's really puzzling is the speckle trout. The speckle trout has a unique capability that within two years, it can totally flip its biomass to where it's just unreali, unbelievably sustainable. And some of the data they're going off of is back in two thousand and nineteen. So that's five years out. I mean, from what they're looking at, almost six. And even at that time, the speckle trout was well above, the biomass was well above sustainability. But now they're re-looking at it and with some of the current data they have, which is still up above the, the sustainability trigger, they're looking at some harvest reductions of twenty to fifty-three percent.
It's ridiculous.
Well, the Marine, it's the same story. They're crushing.
Exactly.
Same story.
So that's one of the big things that's come out of that, that, and they're also looking at the flounders as well and also again at rockfish. It's a, it's just an endless onslaught of how can we, we reduce, how can we, can we reduce? But yet they do all these reductions, but for some reason the biomass doesn't change. It, or the, or it does change, but it's not changing enough, or it changes worse, depending on which way they look at it. Also, what we've recently found out was that in two thousand fourteen, around about that area, the way they calculate the biomass at Division Marine Fisheries changed. Now, if you'll notice, a lot of these fishery plans that we're looking at now with a reduction in biomass has been triggered because, since nineteen fourteen. So we need to really look at why did it change? What is the reason for it to change? And look a little bit deeper into it than what we've been, the answers we've been getting. So we're going to continue to do that and I just want to make everybody be aware of that.
Steve, have they proposed new creole limits for speckle trout?
They have. I'm not exactly sure what they are off the top of my head. I don't have that information right in front of me. But yeah, they are looking at different creole limits for speckle trout and also size limits and bag limits of not only speckle trout, but also flounders too. They're looking at changing those as well. Our day in history, nineteen forty-four, the sixty-eighth and last transport of Dutch Jews left from Westerbrook for Auschwitz concentration camp. Why is that important? Anne Frank was on that train. And everybody who is well familiar with the Holocaust knows about Anne Frank's diaries. And that was our history for today. I'm sorry, we do not have a pet of the week. We do? You got it this morning?
Sent it into your.
All right. That turns the meeting around. Let's see the pet of the week.
Our pets of the week this week are Anne and Marie.
Our Pets of the Week this week are Anne and Marie. Sadly, these girls were seized from a puppy mill where they were used for breeding their entire lives. Anne is five years old, and Marie is seven. They are purebred poodles and are so excited to be here, learning how to be a dog and opening up each day. Anne and Marie both love to go on walks and are learning to play with toys. They love all the love and attention they can get to adopt Anne or Marie or foster one of our other animals. Come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Mannheim. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please run down to OBX SPCA, check them out, and maybe you can give Anne and Marie their forever home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any of y'all been out there lately?
I have.
The dog park is just as green and plush, and they got all kinds of pools out there for them to play in and.
Well-used too.
Huh? Oh, good, good. I was really pleased to see that when I was out there the other day. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'd like to recognize our service pin recipients, Jamie and Dan, for their 35 years of service. At the last Alligator River Bridge discussion at the RPO meeting, per some of the DOT representatives that was there, construction is sort of tentatively scheduled to start around November of this year, and that will be the beginning of them putting in the production pilings.
Is this for real? You're not, this is not a kid or a tease?
I don't think they were funning me. I think they were telling the truth.
Wow. Thank you, thank you.
It is only way they're supposed to be removing the test pilings now during this period of time. But if everything, everything goes well, it looks like we're going to get started on that. And also the areas on the mainland and on Bon Oak Island, the access areas, they'll be working on those relatively soon as well as part of this whole deal. So we're looking, looking forward to that happening. Maybe they will have a new bridge in 2025 or early '26, so.
Holy guacamole.
That's incredible.
It'll be something.
Wow.
Getting back to something Steve was talking about, and I mentioned this earlier in a discussion I had out on the floor with somebody. It looks as though North Carolina Division, Division Marine Fisheries wants North Carolina to become a nursery for flounder for Virginia and South Carolina. Virginia, South Carolina still have year-round seasons. They still have a sizable creole limit. Virginia's length is higher, is longer than what it is or was in North Carolina and is in South Carolina. But we're going to be providing them, it looks like, going forward, unless something changes with plenty of biomass, all they got to do is swim a little way. So we'll just be a really good nursery for Virginia and South Carolina in that regard. On a personal note, I want to thank everyone for your support, and thanks for all the get well cards, emails, and particularly your prayers recently. It really meant a lot to me. I'm supposed to behave and do nothing or minimal activities for the next.
I don't see that happen.
Yeah, for the next 12 weeks, and I'm doing my best to behave, so we'll see how it goes from here. But thank you to everybody. I appreciate you so much.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Wally, welcome back. We surely missed you.
Thank you, Senator.
Yes, sir. The dog park, I take my coon dog out there and let him run, and Spencer has done a great job out there. Guys, I mean, you know, there's very, very beautiful grass out there. They mow it at least, Bobby, I don't know what the schedule is, but it seemed like every other, at least twice a week it's mowed and taken up really good care of. We had plastic pools out there, and the dogs are eating the pools, so he bought us a metal pool. And so the dogs get in there and they swim around and just have a great time. Anyway, it's quite a group. I think they even have a Facebook page, someone said so. How about the boat ramp in Wan Chee's? We heard any more about that?
In fact, we went out there and I met with Jonathan DeWes from Public Works about getting some rock out there and some crush and run to cover the area that we have control, and that should be hap, as soon as I get with him, that should be happening. He had to check with the owners once again to be sure they were okay with what we were about to do. But I think we're going to have that resolved.
Fantastic. That's good. And Bob, thank you very much for taking the initiative with the soccer moms and the fields out there. I know the last year, I know everybody got calls like I did, but I was on the phone all the time answering questions from the Storm, from Diane, from, you know, all these folks that are very, very active in soccer, as well as our baseball fields, you know, the tennis courts. I'm excited to see what we have coming out on this study, what we need in Dare County, and hopefully we can address all these issues, because that's the, I think that's where a lot of our money's going to go in the future, is the development of different fields and so forth for our kids and for the elderly, folks also and young people. The DM, let me ask Steve, the DMF Board, is all that appointed by the governor?
Every single person on the Division of Marine.
The Marine Fisheries Commission, MFC, yeah.
Is appointed by the governor himself.
Yep.
And they're the ones that make all these radical decisions?
Yes and no. Here's the kicker. Division Marine Fisheries does have the final say so in our fisheries. However, the way it's written up is they have to follow what Division of Marine Fisheries wants them to do. If they want to change anything that Division Marine Fisheries puts out there, like in these fishery plans, they put out all the, all the different levels they want to do, and they have one recommendation. Now, for the commission to go against that recommendation and put something else on there, they have to have a three-fifths majority.
Which is nearly impossible.
Which is nearly impossible on that commission the way it's laid out.
Steve, you're, just not to conflate things, but there's a Marine Fisheries Commission and a Division of Marine Fisheries.
Yes.
So the Marine Fisheries Commissions are the ones that's making the recommendations to the Division of Marine Fisheries?
No, Division Marine Fisheries is making recommendations to the commission. Then the commission has to either approve them or change them.
Therein lies some confusion.
So the Division of Marine Fisheries does not have final say?
Division of Marine Fisheries is a state agency.
It's a what?
A what?
It's a state agency.
Okay.
It's not a commission. So the commission, who was appointed by the governor, oversees the Division of Marine Fisheries.
The commission was appointed.
They have the authority.
Okay.
Sir, the commission is the one that makes the decisions?
They can, yes. They have the absolute power to make that, to make the changes. The only thing is, if they go against what the Division of Marine Fisheries wants, then they've got to have a major majority. In other words, like, try to break it down somewhat understandable. Our county manager, he would represent or be in this, in this scenario, he would be the Division of Marine Fisheries. And he would be coming to us and telling us, hey, we need this, this, and this. And then it's up to us to agree with it or not to agree with it.
Well, we have the authority.
But we have the authority. But if we wanted to change what he's asking us to do, we would have to have.
Three fifths.
Three fifths majority.
So Steve, the ultimate decision is with division, the state agency, right? That's the ultimate.
No, the ultimate decision's actually with the commission.
But the division can overturn that with the three fifths vote.
And here's the kicker too, the director of Marine Fisheries has proclamation power.
So the commission has to do what the director says unless they've got three fifths of vote to do otherwise, is essentially what happens. It's like, I'm telling you what you got to do, and unless you got three fifths of vote, y'all have to do what I say.
The Division of Marine Fisheries, not to get myself tangled.
I'm talking about the commission.
I know you are, Marine Fisheries Commission. I don't know what the Division of Marine Fisheries is, a government agency?
State agency.
With elected, is there an elected official?
No, not on.
That runs it?
It's just like the Division of Coastal Management from which KAMA works under to get a KAMA permit.
Okay.
The Division of Marine Fisheries has a, KAMA has, has the commission, has the Coastal Resources Commission. The Division of Marine Resources has.
Marine Fisheries.
Fisheries Commission.
And has a director, I presume?
Has a director, and he has powers.
And that director would be appointed? I don't, if he's not elected or she's not elected, I presume they were appointed.
No, they were hired.
No, no, somebody's got to hire them. Who's got the authority to hire them?
Secretary DEQ.
So this is all in the executive branch. Governor Cooper, Secretary DEQ, the Marine Fisheries Commission, no, Division of Marine Fisheries, and for some reason there's the Marine Fisheries Commission, which I still can't figure out why we need them if we have a DMF.
The Division of Marine Fisheries is just the name of a department, and to operate the Division of Marine Fisheries, you have the commission, and then the commission has, and then you have a director who does the day-to-day stuff.
The Marine Fisheries Commission has the power here.
Correct. Has the ultimate authority.
Yeah, and the members of that are appointed by?
The governor.
The governor. So we've got the executive branch, the members are appointed. If we have an issue, it's through the executive branch of our government, which is Governor Cooper. All right. I'm just trying to make sure I understand all the alphabets.
Well, the reason that we went through this confusing thing here. It puts a grave impact on every business in North Carolina on the Outer Banks.
It kind of does.
Just, just, I mean, everything is going through the roof, y'all. I mean, it's absolutely bonkers. If you buy fresh seafood, which is what we buy, and every other restaurant, I'm not singling my restaurant, I'm just telling you because I can speak for myself, if you buy fresh seafood, all of a sudden your cost, which used to be you can make some really good money, you can't make that kind of money anymore.
No, no.
You know, just yesterday, and this is not governed by the North Carolina Marine Fisheries, but scallops, for instance, scallops today for a dry scallop, if you buy a true good dry scallop, 1620, which is what we buy, $18.50 a pound. $18.50.
I don't know what that means, Erv. That might be really good if they used to be $35.
It's like a bushel of crabs is pushing 40 bucks.
It's terrible. It's absolutely bonkers.
You're sure you're not one of the greedy corporations?
Means I'm not making any money.
You look like a greedy corporation, price gouging consumers.
And you can buy a scallop as sodium tripolite.
This is where the national insanity comes to play in our community, guys.
But it turns to water, and you got a scallop like this, and it's, you know, but all these things that trickle down to the small business people who are now not making the dollars and the cents. So these people making decisions with the quote of, oh, we're saving the environment, we're saving these little fishes, all we're doing is killing business and killing the fact that, it goes right down to the end user buying at Outland Seafood or Verman's Harbor. You know, a bushel of oysters now is going to cost them $90, $100.
Well, one, Erv, one of the things we're working on too is whenever the Marine Fisheries and Marine Fisheries Commission comes up with a fish management plan, according to the '97 Act that put it all together, is commission is supposed to consider the economic impact of the fishery plan. However, they are not required to do an economic impact study of the plan. And if you read the plans, usually it's about two paragraphs to a full page, and it basically tells you you're going to catch less fish, you're going to make less money.
Anyway, my point's made.
So some things are, some things are in the works to change that, but unfortunately, that's what it is right now.
And another thing I would just tell you, this was just a screw-up during McCrory's tenure, as it is right now.
Oh, yeah.
So we can't say it's, you know, I guess you could say.
It hasn't been fixed or improved for us, has it?
Oh, it hasn't? No, it hasn't.
Okay.
Hasn't been fixed in 20 years.
And we see what the end result is of all this. All we've done is just digress in fisheries. All this effort and these commissions and stuff, and what do we have? A debacle.
Anything else, Commissioner Bateman?
I'm done.
Commissioner Couch?
Yes, thank you. And echo what, Wally, it's just good to have you over here. It's just kind of odd. I'll leave it at that when you weren't here last meeting. Ervin and I get lonely down here. I do want to, in regards to what Gray Parsons said with the Frisco Native American Museum, we have enduring symbols with our water towers that are named after our Native American heritage here, and this is good stuff. They did a great job with the Secotan Symposium. He reiterated on the fact we had five PhDs here, and there's a lot of eyes that are on us. It supports our lost colony. It supports our place as the first people. This is a lot of good stuff, a lot of scholarly interpretation that can be done on this. Stephanie Banfield, who redid the resolution, or tweaked the resolution there, she had reached out to UNC Department of Indian Affairs there. But I'm hoping the board will agree. We've got capital improvement coming up on the water tower. For years, it just had the Dare County symbol, but it's right there where Croatoan is. And if this board is amenable to it, just to continue to have enduring symbols to our Native American heritage, if we can, whether it takes a motion or consensus, is to name that tower Croatoan. I trust those guys at the Frisco, I'll stick my neck out, and I trust those guys, and their heart's in the right place, and they're doing good work down there.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
There has been some talk over the last couple of years as we repaint towers not to put names on them at all because of there's some financial concerns and issues with that. Can we wait till we get ready to paint that tower and make that decision and see where we are in that discussion?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. Again, it's a landmark to our, to our Native American heritage here. I hope we can justify the expenses and paint to have Croatoan, Emantio, and Wan Chee's, and Skiko, and Kinniket and Chicken Kamiko on our towers. People ask questions.
When's that on our schedule?
I don't know the answer. I'd have to find out.
It was 2024 capital improvements, but it's coming up. It's in the next few years we'll be acting on this.
How about we won't paint it till I come back to you?
Do what now?
We won't paint it until I come back to you.
Yeah, we, I mean, at least have some discussion about it.
Do we, do we paint things on towers? So the policy is not to been painting things on towers?
No, we have been. There was discussion from the Water Department about changing the policy to not put those on towers, and they had some reasons, which I can't remember, but I'll, I'll get that for you and see if that's still in the works.
I've seen other water towers painted. They look pretty darn good.
What they were saying is just put the seal on it and nothing else on our, on each side.
I'd be curious as to what their opposition would be.
Well, they're big, they're big advertisements. I mean, you go to Tarboro, you go to Rockingham County, they've got their mottos, because everybody sees them when they're blowing down the interstate.
Go to Florida, one of them's painted like a peach. Go up to Currituck, go up to the Corolla.
Before they had all the technology and flying, your water tower was the only directional devices you had when you were flying, so, yeah.
All right.
The constituents request.
Yeah. Be open-minded about that, Danny. Absolutely.
I am too.
Anything else?
No, you know.
No history today?
There's always history. I'm about, gee, I'm not going to bore you with that. We're actually working on some stuff that, the Hatteras Indians, I know we did the resolution, resolution on the run, but the people always ask what happened to them. They're, they didn't go anywhere. They're right here with us. It's convoluted, but we, the native, the Hatteras Indians are alive and well down there. They just don't look like what you think they should look like.
You mean as in wearing native wear?
Yeah, well, the Native Americans, just real quickly, they didn't, you know, your name is Bob Litterd. This is Ervin Bateman. They, these were matrilineal. So when you name a guy William, you know, William Midget, well, it's confusing to the Native Americans because they were, they followed the mother lines, not the surname of the, of the father, and, you know, they're just throwing.
and, you know, they, they're just throwing up their hands and says, all right, we agree, we'll go along with it, but it's like trying to ram, you know, these two cultures together, it's like trying to ram a square peg into a round hole. But it is, it's good history, it's fascinating stuff, we have, our reputation as first people here is something we have barely tapped into, I just think we owe it to our, to the heritage here to follow through on it.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep, I don't really have anything other than here comes fishing season, and we're looking forward down in Hatteras, we've got the Nags Head Surf Fishing Tournament coming up, got the Hatteras Village Tournament coming up, you got the Okahoke Surf Fishing Tournament, and you can say what you want about the surf fishermen, you know, they're just, they, you know, they're just a bunch of guys out there listening to country music, well, let me tell you, these guys drop a lot of money, you got to have a seventy thousand dollar vehicle to go fishing in, you've got to have bait, you got to have beer, they go out to eat, they rent cottages, I mean, it's, Lee was just here, they, that's quite the shoulder, shoulder boost there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. I've just got one more final thing to say, and I'm very respectful of Colonel Sturgis and, and his efforts, and he's, he's genuine, but this, this goes way beyond the timeframe that something, you know, a little more concrete should have been accomplished by now over a year. This is affecting the economy on Hatteras Island.
Perception.
Perception in itself, when, when they say to, this, this is closed, the people in, coming down here visiting from Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, wherever, well, I'm not going down there, I'm canceling my reservation, and, and we're only talking a small section of beach. So this resonates all over the, all over the country from our visitors, and economically, I'm, I'm sure this has certainly not helped us on Hatteras Island. And, and the, the reason I bring this up again is I'm asking each of you, along with myself, to continue to keep the pressure on the Army Corps and our elected officials, state and federally, until they get sick and tired of hearing from us, but we've got to, we've got to just stay on top of this and, and, and keep the pressure on, and, and I'm hoping by some miracle, we'll get through this a lot sooner than, than what they're projecting, so.
I will tell you, Chairman, that one of the major companies down there has refused to do any rentals in Buxton, and the owner of the property is howling, and you've got people wanting to rent a house, well, I don't care, well, the beach is, it's closed right here, it's, it's fostering, it's fostering more trouble, there needs to be a resolution.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, and that's why I'm asking, when you're talking to our representatives and whomever.
Months and months and months away, I heard him say it.
Yeah.
It'll be months before the first analysis, it'll be next spring for the second, touching the concrete rebar.
Well, we just, we just, like I say, we need to continue to keep pressure, and that's, we do what we can. Okay, folks, I need a motion, Bobby, you want to read that to go in closed session?
I need a motion to go in closed session pursuant to GS 143 318 11A3 to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege with respect to the Selby and Lutz matters, I need one pursuant to GS 143 318 11A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents on behalf of the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property, and this would be with respect to the Dare Building Supply property, and then I need one pursuant to 143 through 1811A6 to review the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion back, Commissioner Couch, seconded by Commissioner Bateman, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Call the Dare County Board of Commissioners back to order and turn it over to the county manager?
Yeah, in the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session, consulted with the county attorney, gave county attorney instructions with regard to the negotiating of a contract, and discussed the character, quality, performance, fitness, conditions of appointment of a Dare County employee, took no other action.
Okay, thank you, county manager. That brings us to close to our meeting, and I need a motion to adjourn until October seventh.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House, been seconded by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.